Okay, it is 5:30, August 13th at 5:30. And I, we have a full dais. I am calling this meeting to order. We will immediately be going into executive session to discuss Agenda Item 2A. City Council shall convene and to close the executive session pursuant to Section 551.086 of the Texas Government Code to discuss competitive matters related to Bastrop Power and Light. We will come back and take care of Item 3, but we will start our regular meeting at 6:30 at our normal time. It is 5:30 and we are in executive session. Okay, it is 6:14. We are back out of executive session. On Item Number 3, take any necessary or appropriate action on matters posted for consideration and closed at the executive session. There will be no actions taken. So it is still 6:14 and we are going to be in recess and we will come back and start our meeting on time at 6:30. So we are in recess. Thank you. It is 6:30 and we are back in order as authorized by Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code. This meeting may be convened into closed executive session for the purposes of seeking confidential legal advice from the city attorney on any item on the agenda at any time during the meeting. The City of Bastrop reserves the right to reconvene, recess, or realign the regular session or called executive session or order of business at any time prior to adjournment. It is 6:30. We are convening our regular session. And before we get started, I want to talk about a couple of things. The agenda originally that the city manager showed me, I didn't, I knew that I would have to bring a sleeping bag and I did not think that that would result in good decisions if we were running until 2:00 in the morning. That is why we have broken this standard meeting into two meetings. That is not what we plan on doing all the time. We'll talk about some of the content of this meeting and why we have some extra stuff, but that's why we're meeting tonight and tomorrow night. Also, the 5:30 start, the 5:30 executive session start today didn't impact the public as much, but the reason that we're starting early tomorrow is because we also don't know how long it's going to take us to get through everything tomorrow. And quite frankly, all of us on the dais tend to make better decisions before 11:00 than we do after 11:00, so we're, we're starting a little bit early. So that's, that's why the agenda is the way it is, but no, going forward, we, we meet on the second and fourth Tuesdays. We meet at 6:30 and we generally try to get all of our business done in, in one session in one night. So with that, to start us off, I'm going to ask Kendall Eddy to step forward and she's going to turn around so you can come, come right up here by the podium and turn around and smile so these people, no, you got to move where they can see you. On the one side or the other, there she is. This is Kendall Eddy and she is interested in being a mayor someday. And she just moved back to town and I have full and complete true confessions. Her mom reached out to me and asked if I could meet with her and I told her I would love to meet with a future mayor and get her advice. And then they found out that Kendall will actually be starting school at Smithville Junior High because they live off McAllister and she found out that she was in Smithville. And her sweet mom said, but well, she's going to go to Smithville School, but do you still want to meet with her? Well, of course, I still want to meet with her. So I, Kendall has promised me when she meets Mayor Saunders, she's going to make sure he knows that she has already met the mayor of Bastrop when she meets the mayor of Smithville. So she's going to be in 6th grade and since she is a future politician, her favorite subject is social studies. So let's give Kendall a round of applause. If everyone will please rise, this young lady's going to lead us in both of the pledges. If you will remain standing, Chaplain Burke will step forward and give us our invocation tonight after we all look at the amber alert. Chaplain Burke?
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, Lord, we just thank you for this city council, for Mayor Schrader, for the city manager, Lord, for each council member. Lord, we thank you for their service to this community, Lord, for the time, the dedication they, that they put. And Lord, I thank you that you give them wisdom tonight and tomorrow night as they consider the different things that they have to make decisions on for the betterment of this community. Lord, we thank you at this time, Lord, when young kids are getting ready to go back to school from the, from the summer. Lord, we pray peace and order over every part of our city here with the school system and those in homeschool and the churches. Lord, we thank you that we are a blessed community and we just thank you for all of this in Jesus' name. Amen.
You may be seated. Thank you so much, Chaplain Burke. We really appreciate all the time and effort that you do, not only as police chaplain, but also for our community. Ladies and gentlemen, you'll notice that presentations tonight, there is no mayor's report, there's no city manager's report, there's no council report because we have an extremely long agenda. So we are going to dive right into it. Colin, I'm going to give you a heads up and also for the public as well, we will be listening to 8A and our consultant, Chris Eckert, will be presenting that. And when we hear, after we hear his presentation, we will then be moving to Items 12A because we're going to be voting on the things that he just talked to us about, so that's why we're doing that. And then we will also go ahead and take 12B and 12C at the same time. And we will also, Madam Secretary, do we have anyone signed up for citizens' comments? Okay, so we have a person signed up, God bless you. We have somebody signed up for an individual item, but we'll, we will acknowledge the citizens' comments and then we will go back to 8B and we will follow through the rest of the agenda. So with that, we are on the top of Page 2 for tonight's agenda. And council, I also want to make sure that you guys all know that there was some minor revisions made to the agenda packet in your Dropbox. So if you have your Dropbox pulled up on your iPad, you'll want to make sure you've pulled up the revised one because otherwise we may get into, that's not on my page. So if you go back to the Dropbox and get to August 13th, there'll be one that was revised. And I think it went out about 4:00, 3:30, 4:00?
And mayor and council, there was no substantive changes. We just have had so much going on with the epic agendas that the mayors referenced, they didn't get proofread. So county staff has proofread them, fixed the Scrivener errors and the formatting changes so that the revised packets are correct, particularly the attachments the mayor will sign if approved.
I just wanted to make sure that we were all referencing the same packet because it may make it easier as we go through the meeting. Okay, so we are on Item 8A, receive briefing on water wastewater impact fees and anticipated changes to the standardized wholesale water and wastewater contracts. Mr. Eckert?
Before Chris starts, mayor and council, I want to provide a little context for you for his conversations. As you are aware, we have some substantial capital projects being constructed in both the water and wastewater utilities. And part of having appropriate impact fees to capture those costs is good fiscal sustainability. So Chris is here to talk about the first of many impact fee updates because with the amount of construction that we have going on, I anticipate you'll see him every six months for the next three years. Back in the spring, we presented to you some standardized wholesale water and wastewater contracts because one of the ways that we need to pay for this system is to provide water regionally because we do have a regional certificate of convenience and necessity that is three times the size of the City of Bastrop. We are working with our first water and wastewater wholesale customer. And in doing so, we realized that some of the verbiage relative to impact fees and some other things that had been calculated was slightly confusing. So while we have Chris here tonight, he's going to talk to you about how the impact fees and what he's going to present is going to impact the contract so that when you see them in a couple of weeks, he won't have to come back and address that. So with that, Chris, now it's your turn.
Thank you very much. Mayor, council, again, Chris Eckert with New Gen, it's a pleasure to be with you. I understand you've got a very full agenda, so I do have some slides I want to walk you through tonight just to kind of talk about impact fees. I'm going to do this as quickly as possible, but as always, I'd rather this be a discussion than a presentation, so please don't hesitate to stop me at any time as we go through this information. So with that being said, we started looking at impact fees in about September of 2018, so this has been a long time coming to get to this point. But ultimately, what is an impact fee? Why are we talking about this? An impact fee is a fee that is governed by Chapter 395 of the Texas Local Government Code. If you hear nothing else tonight, I want you to hear Chapter 395 of the Local Government Code. It is a very specific provision of law that governs how we calculate impact fees. And what an impact fee is, it is a fee that a municipality charges to new development. This is only, this only applies to new development, not existing customers, not existing people within the city. It's only new development. And what we're trying to do is recover the cost, the impact of that new development on your water and wastewater system. But we're trying to recover that cost within the provisions of the law. And so let's talk about the law for just a second. The law specifically says we can only recover certain items. Those are on the screen right now, construction, survey and engineering, land acquisition, financing costs, and honestly, my fees associated with doing this type of work. That's all that you can put into the fee. You cannot put into the fee operating cost. This is not for city operations. If there is a capital improvement project that needs to be done, but it's not included in this plan that we've developed, it can't go in the fee. If you have existing deficiencies in your system, if right now there is insufficient capacity for existing customers, the cost of that cannot go in the fee. It's very, very specific to new development and the impact of new development. Okay? So just want to make sure we're all on the same page. What is this cost that we're looking at? It's very, very restrictive. So with that said, how do you calculate a fee? A fee is a fraction. It's a numerator divided by denominator. So I know we've got some, some kids in the audience who do use math every day. It's a numerator over denominator. This is a fraction. Our numerator is our dollars. That is the amount that we can recover in the fee. That's the land acquisition. That's the construction. All of those dollars associated with the new development. Our denominator of the fraction is the new units that are coming on, coming into the city that are coming on. But at the same time, when you think about 395, it's time limited. We can only look at 10 years. So we, we look into the future, we look at the cost over the next 10 years, we look at the development over the next 10 years. We can't go out and get dollars that may be needed in year 20 or year 30. We're very time limited in what we can do. So we are looking at a 10-year timeframe when we're coming up with both our cost and our growth. Okay? So with that being said, a couple of other things we can include in a fee, financing costs. Capital projects are expensive. We have to typically issue debt for some of these projects. To the extent you issue debt and you incur interest costs, that interest cost can be included in the fee. But again, time limited, it's just associated with those projects within that timeframe. But then we also have to recognize that with this new development, the customers that are coming into the city that are paying the impact fee, ultimately, they're going to be customers of your system. So they're also going to be rate payers on your system. The law is very specific. It says you cannot recover the cost in an impact fee and then also charge those customers in rates. You can't double recover. And so the law requires us, 395 requires us to go in and basically do a credit calculation. Look at either the projected revenues that those customers would generate in the future or in lieu of that rather complex calculation, you can take the fee and cut it in half. And so that's what we've done in this case. We've taken the fee and we've cut it in half. And so you're going to see that later. The reason I bring that up, a lot of, a lot of councils I'm in front of think that impact fees are the, you know, they're fantastic. We're going to get all of the dollars we need. Well, no, you're not. You're only getting half of the dollars you need for growth. So what does that mean? Where are we going to get the other half of those dollars? Ultimately, that does get built into rates. So when we start looking at fees, and I talk to councils about this all the time, be very, very careful because as you start to look at these fees, the dollars get to be pretty large. And, but when you're thinking about that, if you don't recover that full fee, if you charge, if you choose not to charge that full fee, that just puts more into ultimately your rates. Because again, we've got to have all the dollars to make all of these improvements and do what we need to do. And so we need to be sure as we set that fee, we set it as sufficient as we can to get the dollars we need to make the improvements we need. Okay? Is everybody clear on that? All right, very good. So again, what I'm here tonight talking about is a maximum assessable fee. The fee I'm recommending to you is the highest you can go at this time. As we've said before, we will come back, we'll be looking at this very, very often into the future. Likely you will see this fee increase. But what I'm here to tell you tonight is what is the maximum you can charge at this time in accordance with the law. So with that being said, let's talk about a few assumptions that we've used. So as we look at the growth coming, the factor that we're using right now is a 3% growth factor. Now, I recognize in conversations with staff that likely this is probably a little low. We're anticipating that growth is going to be more substantial than this. But at the end of the day, I have to develop a fee in accordance with the law that is justifiable, that meets the legal requirements. And in doing that, we also have to look at published demographic data. We've got to use good published sources. And so all of the sources right now, 0.23%, but there's a lot of pent-up demand. There's a lot of anticipated demand coming that just hasn't been quantified yet. As that happens, as that comes on, you're going to see this assumption change. So right now, that's, that's our starting point. It's only going to go up from there. As we look at the next 10 years, what that amounts to is we're anticipating 2,346 new water connections on the city system, 2,150 new wastewater connections. Wastewater's a little less because you're starting with less wastewater connections. You also have irrigation system connections which adds more on the water side. So that's why those two numbers are different. As we look at capital projects, we've identified 34 water projects that are needed or at least a portion of those projects are needed to meet new demand. 22 wastewater projects is what we've identified. So let's start with water. What you, yes, sir?
Now to reiterate what you're saying, the 34 that are included are not ones that are to enhance the existing.
No, sir.
That's all new.
That's all new. So all, all of the capacity included in this plan that you're, that we're about to go through these dollars, that's all new.
Great, thanks.
Yes, sir. So with the water impact fee CIP, our, our capital improvements, our listing of capital improvements, that totals up to $40.7 million right now. Big numbers, big numbers, but 40.7 million. But then we, again, we have to recognize we can only look at that 10-year timeframe. So we're looking at 2019 to 2029. We're just looking at the capacity that's going to be used in that 10 years for that growth in that 10-year timeframe. So after you go through and ratio this out based on the capacities, that $40.7 million comes down to 7.8 million. That's, that's the amount of the capital projects that we can put in the fee. Not the 40, but the 7.8. So that, that goes into our numerator. So then we come in and we add financing costs. Again, we're anticipating we're going to be funding these projects with debt, so we pick up the financing costs associated with those projects. But at the same time, when we go in and do this calculation, we're doing a cash flow analysis. And we are looking at monies coming in and monies going out. Monies come in and go out at different times. And so as we look at that going forward, if we have a balance in the fund, we're anticipating we'll have interest earnings on the fund. We have to back those out. So we take out the interest earnings when we look at cash flow. We also take out existing fund balance. Those are dollars that are already in-house, already, already there for projects. We don't, don't want to double recover. We want to stay in compliance with the law, so we take those items out. I will point out the existing fund balance doesn't have the brackets around it, it should have the bracket so that it is a negative. But ultimately, after we go through this process, the 7.8 becomes 8.37 when we make those additional adjustments. We're $8.3 million there. We divide by our service units and we're now at a fee of $3,569. But again, the law says we have to recognize the credit or cut the fee in half, so we cut that fee in half. And the maximum assessable fee at this time under the law is $1,785. That compares with your current water impact fee of $1,353. So that's an increase of $432. So that's what our recommendation is tonight on your water impact fee, $1,785. So that's the water side. Let's look at the wastewater side. On the wastewater side, $43.2 million in capital improvements. After we go through and recognize capacities, again, we have more needs on the wastewater side. Our wastewater service area is larger, so that's $20.2 million, 20.25 million after we go in and recognize the capacities. Again, we do have more need, we have more capacity need on the wastewater side right now than we do water. After we go through and recognize our interest costs, because again, we're going to finance these projects, but then we recognize our interest earnings, we recognize our fund balance, ultimately, what the amount is that we can recover in the fee is the 23, 23,144,000. We divide that by our service units and that fee is 10,039, but we recognize our credit, we cut it in half. And so our fee with the 50% credit is $5,020. That compares with your current fee right now of $3,554. That's an increase of $1,466. Now, I recognize that is a big increase. We understand that. But again, we have significant needs on the wastewater side right now. So with that said, again, our recommendations on the water side, $1,785. On the wastewater side, $5,020. As you'll see in the ordinance, these fees actually escalate based on the meter size. So as the meter size that is being installed goes up, the fee goes up. The reason we do that is we want to recognize the demand, the capacity on your system. The larger the meter, the greater the instantaneous demand can be placed on the system. What that does, that drives your capacity that you need on your side of the meter. When that customer opens up that meter all the way, you have to be prepared to serve that demand right then, that instantaneous demand. And so that governs the, the structure of your pipes, your pumps, your tanks, things of that nature. So the larger the fee, the greater the impact, the more they should pay. And so that's why you'll see that when we get to the ordinance. So I hesitate to put this slide up, but I do because everybody wants to know, how do we compare to our neighbors? But again, as I, anytime I show you a regional comparison, I'm going to tell you the same thing. This is not apples to apples. Every city is different, every community is different. Everybody is different in their development timeline, they're different in their capital improvements that they need. So what you have to do is look at what is best for your community, not what someone else is doing in their community. But that being said, again, with our recommendations, the combined water and sewer fee right now, $4,907. You can see the blue is the water side, the green is the wastewater side. Under our recommendations, we would increase that from $4,907 up to $6,805. Again, it doesn't put you at the top of the list, it does move you up. However, we had a fantastic discussion with planning and zoning last week on this and it was pointed out that you have others in the area that if you were going to go get water service from, their connection fee is closer to about $4,000. That would be comparable to your $1,785. If you were going to go put a septic system in, a septic system can run potentially, depending upon the type of system, the soil conditions, you could be looking at $10,000, $15,000 for that septic system. That's also going to limit the development that you can have in an area because you have to have a certain land size to put in a septic system. So while these numbers are big, try to look at them in context. We feel that they are competitive with what the alternatives are. So with that being said, I know I ran through that very quickly. It's like drinking from a fire hose, but are there any questions that I can answer?
Councilmember Rogers?
So just to my understanding, so if I was building a subdivision, that impact fee would be for each lot that wanted a water meter?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, just to make sure.
So this, what this is, is this is the base fee for a residential meter, just a single family home.
So they would need one for the water meter and then one for the wastewater meter?
So the, the combined fee for water and sewer would be the $6,805?
But that would be per house that they're building in that subdivision?
Yes, ma'am.
But we don't meter the wastewater, do we?
You do not meter wastewater. You do not meter wastewater because...
The assumption is, you pay for it with what? Yeah, I just, when we, I wanted to clarify, we do not meter wastewater.
We do not meter wastewater. That is extremely difficult and unreliable.
Okay, connection to the wastewater.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Proton Nelson?
Chris, we, on your comparison chart, we, we can assume that the other cities are constantly, hopefully constantly reviewing their impact fees and so our placement within that, this chart may, may change. So we're not being too high, we're not being too low.
Yes, sir.
Although I hate to compare us to other cities, but...
The law, the law actually requires you to look at impact fees every five years. You have to look at them. That doesn't say you can't look at them more frequently, and that's what we're recommending in your case. Because there is so much development, because there are so many needed capital improvements, we're recommending that you look at this more frequently than every five years. But you do have to look at it every five years and potentially adjust. This chart was actually prepared, I believe it was actually back in April of this year. I've not gone back and updated these figures. This may be different right now. So again, this is a snapshot.
And this one time, it's a one-time fee. When is it locked in? Is it locked in at when they pull a building permit? Is it locked in with the platting?
I believe it's at plating, but that's subject to check. I believe it is at plating is when the fee is locked in.
Okay. Councilmember Rogers? Hang on just a second. Councilmember Rogers?
I was just, and for clarifying, when was the last time we looked at the fees? Do you know what year, when the last time we adjusted these fees?
2017, according to tracing.
Okay, just curious.
The reason that we charge the fee at plating, we have to be able to prove that utilities are available when plating, it's part of the state law, so we would pull the, the fee at that time.
Well, and the other thing about pulling the fee at that time is then they're locked into what that fee's going to be for that plat, correct?
That is correct.
So that would be grandfathered when they come in at, at whatever time, point it's been paid. So if they're halfway through building out, can those fees go up? Is staff...
Yeah, I'm getting the look from the back of the room, so I'm fixing to be corrected here.
They're looking scared back there. Come correct us. Matt Jones?
Good evening, mayor, council. So the, the way the new process would work is that we'd do a public improvement plan agreement which would lock in those fees at the time of final plat, but then they would become due as the permit is pulled. So it would go to the, to the builder.
But from a developer's standpoint, they would know this plat is going to have these impact fees and then they would pay it when they pull the permit?
They would lock in with that public improvement plan agreement, so you would lock in those impact fees at that time and then they would be paid, but you would know what you would have coming in. But they, they lock in with that agreement before you file the final plat and then they'd be paid when you pull the permit.
So then if Chris's organization, if they were doing another rate review, they would know we have this many lots locked in at this rate, this many lots at the, correct?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
So we would use that for planning purposes? Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I was thinking, I don't think we make them write that big a check.
Well, and we are in the process of changing our fees and all of this is in process.
But we want to make sure we're saying accurate things. So thank you very much, Mr. Jones. Councilmember Innes?
So Chris, bottom line here is our water impact fee proposed is everybody's higher but two.
Yes, sir.
And conversely, in the wastewater, we're a tad bit close to the top.
Yes, sir.
So bottom line, it, it's based on the infrastructure or the CIPs that we're undertaking.
It's based on the CIPs you're undertaking and the needed capacity that is needed for that growth. So you, you're, frankly, you're in better position right now on water than you are wastewater. And that's a lot, that's significant, that is what is driving the significant difference here, but you also have a difference in your service areas and that drives this as well.
That's what I'm looking for. Thank you.
Mayor Proton Nelson?
But, but the fact is, is that we need to raise our impact fee so we're not burdening our existing citizens with new developments.
I would highly recommend it. Yes, sir.
I want to be real clear on that.
Yes, sir.
On that note, council, if there's no other questions, I, we don't have anyone signed up to speak, so I think that we could be done with Item 8A. And I would encourage you to turn to Page 3 at the top of the page and we will be moving to individual consideration, Item 12A. Or is there something else that we need to talk about before we go to 12A?
Wholesale water and wastewater contract.
Yeah, I was going to say wholesale water and wastewater contract. Do we need to talk about that first?
You'll forgive me, I'm not sure what's in the packet as far as the...
Not a...
Okay, all right. So as we have developed the standardized wholesale water and wastewater contract, within those contracts, the contracts require the wholesale, or excuse me, the wholesale customer to pay the impact fee. So this impact fee will apply within those contracts. So every service unit that is on the provider's side, they would have to pay the impact fee for. That's a, that's a standard process in a number of wholesale contracts and it also That's a, that's a standard process in a number of wholesale contracts, and it also makes sure that the capacity that's coming on, that ultimately you're adding to your system for those wholesale customers, is paid for. So I do want to, do want to make everybody aware that that is in the standardized wholesale contract.
Council, any questions about the impact to the, impact, I was playing with, the consequence to the wholesale water and wastewater contract? Okay, good job, as always. Thank you, very, very good job. Okay, I am moving on to item 12A, hold public hearing and consider action to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2019-24 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, updating and amending Bastrop Code of Ordinance, this chapter 10, article 10.02, entitled Impact Fees, updating the land use assumptions, capital improvement plan, and amending impact fees for water and wastewater utilities as attached in exhibits A through D, providing for an effective date, and move to include on the August 27, 2019, consent agenda for a second reading. Ms. Walden?
So in compliance with chapter 395, we did publish for the public hearing. We also had the impact advisory committee meet, that is a requirement of that chapter. And in your packet, we have included their notes from their minutes, and their recommendations that were brought forward to you are that we do meet every six months, or at least review these impact fees every six months, to make sure that our construction costs haven't changed enough to make a difference, or growth is looking more or less what was the assumptions within the study. Also, they were just bringing forth a recommendation for the fees that Chris presented to them.
Council, we're on page 70 and 71 of your packet, if you want to see. I want to personally thank the, Planning and Zoning, they were doing their impact fee committee work.
It's a, yeah, it's a separate committee.
They really did a good job. I think they asked some really hard questions, and good questions, to make sure they had a good understanding of what they were doing, and it's worth noting that they were unanimous in their recommendations. So if, unless you have any questions for staff, I'm going to open the public hearing. Any questions for staff? I'm officially opening the public hearing. Madam Secretary, do we have anyone signed up for the open, for the public hearing?
No, Mayor.
I'm officially closing the public hearing.
Madam Mayor, I have a question.
Absolutely. Councilmember Ennis?
So bottom line, what we're doing now is plugging Chris's rates into our wholesale water.
That will be a separate item. He was just talking about that for a future meeting you will have. What you're being asked to do tonight is to amend the impact fees. Once you adopt these, they will then be incorporated when we bring those back to you.
But the fees that we would be voting on tonight will be the ones that he, that he just showed you?
Yes.
I think that's what you were asking.
Right.
Yes, they're one in the same.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve his first reading.
I have a motion to approve from Mayor Protim Nelson, and a second from Councilmember Ennis. Is there any further discussion on the recommendation, on the motion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Protim Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Ordinance number 2019-24 is approved to be put on the August 27 consent agenda. As promised, we'll be saying, thank you very much, Chris, and you are free to go. Thank you very much, we'll be moving on to the next item for individual consideration. The item is 12B, consider action to approve the first reading of resolution number R 2019-66 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving the 921 Main Street project, repealing all resolutions in conflict, providing severability, providing an effective date, and move to include on the August 27, 2019, agenda for a second reading. Ms. Reiman Schneider?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and State Manager. Thank you for having us this evening. Just to give you a little background and a little history, as we all know, the Bastrop EDC purchased the property back in 2016, and the building site is 921 Main Street, and we have approached a loan for $1.8 million to, to build the building, and I apologize. This action was taken by the board, the Bastrop EDC Board on May 20 of 2019, through resolution R 2019-0006, and the City of Bastrop Council gave approval to obtain the loan on June 11, 2019. Second reading of the resolution was R 2019-0054. We are at a point where we are looking to have the full project itself approved, and that would be the approval of the entire, entirety of the 921 Main project by resolution R 2019-0015, and that went through the BEDC Board on July 15 of 2019, which includes the hiring of a construction company to construct the building, approved by council, and the hiring of, of a project manager to oversee the construction and provide professional guidance and direction. Do you want me to go further?
No, so with BEDC, and council knows this, like, they have their budget, they have things, but they have to come back, and the next item 12C, it's being required by the bank. So what we had voted on before was you have permission to go get a loan. Now you've got a loan, we've got a, the, BEDC is looking for city to confirm that the city acknowledges there is a project at 921 Main, that it is going to include the building of a building, and the BEDC Board had a discussion and came to the conclusion that ships are not steered by committees, and buildings that are built by committees often go past their time and their budget. It's really good to have a single point of contact that can take care of things and answer questions on a daily basis, and so there is a project manager contract, and they thought that was a really good way to protect the community's investment in the building, to make sure that the building comes in on time and under budget. So this is asking council to approve what BEDC Board has approved. It's a general, overall, you acknowledge there is a project at 921 Main.
The, the other part that I will add also is, part of this process is also, has also given, the EDC Board has deemed the approval of the lease terms that will also be coincided with that, with that project, and if, if you would like me to share what those terms are, I'd be happy to do so.
But we're not approving the terms, right?
It's part of all of the entire project approval process.
That's not part of this resolution.
You are correct.
So did you want me to approve something that's not in here?
No, it was just part of my, part of our notes, so I apologize.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Sorry about that.
It's, mainly it's the project, acknowledging the project, acknowledging that BEDC's spending money on the project, and they are spending money on a construction project manager as a part of that overall total project.
And just to be clear, the reason council is voting on this is that there is a state law in the 5A provision, or 4A provision of your money, that when a project exceeds a threshold, I believe, of $10,000...
Yes, we are, that is correct.
It requires council to vote by resolution two occasions. So they are meeting the standard of the law as required by your funding of 4A for this project.
That is correct.
Okay. Councilmember Jackson?
Right, so, and the reason that lease is permission, because it hadn't been signed or executed yet, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so that's why we're, it's not in the situation, but...
Well, like I said, those are strictly, what was, what I was going to share with you is just the terms, not the actual lease itself.
Right.
That is correct.
But since it hadn't been signed, it's not finalized yet?
It is just the terms, not the lease. Those are two separate things, so, yes, you are correct.
The terms have been accepted.
Yeah, the terms have been accepted.
That's why the, the lease terms were approved in, by the BEDC Board, and that's why they were in the packet, and everyone knows it's a 10-year lease, and it's $19 the first five years and $20 the second five years. That's all been public. But we aren't, the, it's not in the packet, because City Council is not approving the lease, because the lease is...
I didn't think so, but I thought you just said it.
She didn't mean to, she, what I'm saying is, it was public from a BEDC standpoint. That lease was brought to the BEDC Board, because that's who will own the lease. She's trying to give us all the possible information, but the, the lease is not a part of what you're talking about tonight for 12B. Any other questions for staff?
Jean, thank you, the staff and the board for vetting through this process. I really appreciate the hard work y'all put into this, and with that, I move to approve this resolution and place it in the next agenda for a second reading.
Second.
I have a motion from Mayor Protim Nelson, and a second from Councilmember Peterson. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Protim Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Thank you, the motion passes unanimously, and we will be moving on to item 12C, consider action to approve the first reading of resolution number 2019-67 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving the resolution of the Board of Directors of Bastrop Economic Development Corporation regarding a loan in the amount not to exceed $1.42 million, a sales tax remittance agreement between the city and the corporation resolving all, resolving, excuse me, resolving other matters incident and related to the loan, and the authority of the mayor to execute on behalf of the city a general certificate of the city and the sales tax remittance agreement, and move to include on the August 27, 2019, agenda for second reading. Ms. Ryan?
Good morning, good morning, good evening, City Council, Mayor, and, well, the City Manager was here. I'm Angela Ryan with the Bastrop Economic Development Corporation. Y'all pretty much already discussed all this, this is just to paper the deal for the loan. Originally, the council approved a loan in the amount of $1.8 million, but after discussing it with Roscoe State Bank, we decided that we would put down a down payment of $377,072. So the actual loan amount is now $1.4 million. And their bank is, or their attorneys are requesting that we get City Council approval by resolution, just as if the same process we would do if we were going out for, for a bond issuance. So the resolution you have in front of you in your packet just needs to be approved by the council, it's, so the bank can proceed with the paperwork. This is for the first reading, and it needs to come back for a second reading on the 27th. And if you have any questions?
Councilmember Jackson?
Oh, Councilmember Ennis was there for us, I'll let him go ahead.
I just couldn't say, it's pro forma.
Yes, sir, we did not write it, so it's, it's very, yes.
So Councilmember Jackson, are you...
No, I was, I thought he was about to make the motion to approve, although it's been a second, but I will wait on that.
Mayor Protim Nelson?
Angela, and again, it's, I want to, I want to reference the local government code of why this being brought to this body for approval, because it's required under section 505158.
That is correct. We are a population of under 20,000 still currently, and by that law, that means we have to have two readings of City Council for anything, any expenditure for a project over $10,000.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Ryan. Councilmember Ennis?
I move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Ennis.
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Peterson, is there any discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Yay!
Thank you.
Great step in the right direction, really appreciate council's support on that. Okay, as promised, we've done, we're, go back to page two, council, we've done 8A, we've done 12A, B and C, and with the hours that BEDC staff has been working lately, we fully expect both of them to run to the parking lot, so we will excuse them definitely. And Citizens Comments is agenda item number 10. Madam Secretary, I think we have no one signed up for Citizens Comments, we do have a person signed up for 8B.
Yes, ma'am.
So with that, we are considering that we have taken that item into account. So we are, speaking of 8B, we are moving to item 8B. Received briefing from Bastrop County Historical Society, Visitor Center and Museum, Bastrop Opera House, Lost Pines Art Center, and the YMCA, all requesting to contract for fiscal year 2020 funding. So shall we just go in order? Ms. Sapikas, you're up first.
Hopefully, this will be less complicated. You all earn your money. Thank you for having me, welcome. I always get nervous when I start. So I'll start with the visitor center, I guess I have a little button here. Just wanted to look at the numbers over the last three years for the visitor center. As you know, we have seven days that we are open, and our numbers show that they are increasing considerably. So in 2017, we had about 8,000, 2018, 10,000, and so far this year, we've already passed what we did in 2018. So if you look at that, we're on a trajectory of between 14,000 and 15,000 visitors coming by to say hello and, and learn more about Bastrop. Graphically, it shows, we're 43 to 50% growth from last year, and of course, we're still waiting numbers for next quarter. So in 2020, we have asked for a slight increase to have another person to help out in the visitor center, particularly for during busy times during the week, just to continue the great service that we provide. We will continue to provide up-to-date information, stay open, and provide support for special events. There's a picture of, I believe that was the pop-up event?
Yes.
Yeah. Collaborate, continue to collaborate with our community partners in Visit Bastrop, and of course, adhere to all applicable laws. For the museum, on the museum side, we get...
Ms. Sapikas, if I could please enter, council, I would encourage you to look at page 23 of the packet, you can see all of the numbers, and you, when you mentioned the slight increase, last year you had asked for 102,000, and this year you're asking for 109,752 dollars.
I'm sorry, that's correct.
Is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, I just wanted to get us all on the same page before you moved on to the museum.
Yeah, and that's strictly for additional associate, part-time associate. So on the museum side, we do preservation and promotion, and we have a tour component. Those two areas have remained the same. We have a slight, we have asked for another line item for tour coordinating type of position, which I'm going to talk about in a minute, but I want to go through just some of the things we do plan to do, which is increase awareness of our mission through activities that allow people to experience Bastrop's history. We have now, we have now formalized the program committee, the chair of that committee is here tonight. We will continue to do quarterly meetings, along with family events, special presenters, which we had in August 1st Friday, and we're going to implement a lecture series, we'll host three to four special exhibits. I'll talk about the tour program, scaling that up in a minute, I have another slide for that. Remain open for 1st Fridays, I know it's no longer a formal program, but it's just something we do enjoy doing. We're going to develop a junior historian program, and that's a picture of traveling truck that we want to expand on for the schools. So that one right there will be the pioneer one, and we'll have others next year as well. And then, of course, the partnerships that we have. We'll also continue to catalog and preserve archival items, which is huge. We went from 12,000 or so items to now 14,000, that continues to grow, and that's wonderful. Of course, we're probably running out of space, but that's another council meeting. Continue to assist with research. We have a, a man who's transcribing handwritten documents dated 1850 to 1880, which, if you think about that, nobody can read handwriting anymore, so this is really, we're really exciting, it's exciting that this will happen and they'll be able to be researched. We're going to reprint The Shadow of the Lost Pines, if you've never seen this book. Carol Kaiser, our archivist, is working on an index for this book, so that people can actually use it to research, because it's this collection of Bastrop advertiser articles and other articles that have happened throughout the years, and it's just a great, a great reference piece. So we'll continue to do that. We want to start researching, catalog lost communities, the Freedom Colony exhibit, y'all got to see it, was really, really successful. We went from knowing 13 communities to 25 or 26, so there's other communities as well, so I want to continue to do that. Of course, our old histories, we need to begin to transcribe these, and also create a website where people can go and access them easily, and of course, increase our membership base. So let's talk just briefly about tours, we're going to do the Holiday Homes Tour, it will be epic. We are, I've been assured by our Homes Tour Chair, so I can't give any more detail than that, but I believe we have all the houses secured and the church. But along the other lines, Visit Bastrop has approached us to, you know, ramp up on the tours that we can provide for people who come to town, on conferences, workshops, those sorts of things, and so next year, I want to really work hard to recruit, mentor, train, all those things, and so I just wanted to show you, little showing hell, that we have the curriculum now, we have the Step on Bus Tour, we have the museum curriculum, and we have the walking, the downtown walking tour curriculum. So now we're ready, and that's what we put into this year's budget, a little extra help that we would partner with you all on to recruit, again, train, mentor, provide, provide support, shadow, all those things. So that's what that is for, and that was, I believe, is about 10,000, in addition to kind of some staff time, also advertising, these, these things here come at a bit of a cost as well, so that sort of thing, that's what we put that in there for. And again, to work with Visit Bastrop to, hopefully, they can count on that more regularly, and have that be something that they can count on to sell to the people coming here. And with that, thank you.
Great job. You guys have just done outstanding. Any questions, Councilmember Ennis?
It's been talked about for years to republish The Shadow of the Lost Pines, and I congratulate y'all for, for undertaking that project. It is an incredibly comprehensive compiling of history of Bastrop, Bastrop County.
Well, Andy helped us too, got the, um, opportunity to do that through the Bastrop advertiser, so
Thank you, Andy.
we're excited when, when the index is ready to go, then we'll republish it at that time, so.
Great.
Fantastic. And council, just for clarity, they are, uh, last year, they were funded at forty-four thousand, nine hundred and thirty-seven, and their request this year is fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-two, and Miss Sepikas has explained the difference in those amounts, and again, I'm on page twenty-three.
And it would be just the one time, once the program is up and running, it should be much easier just to sustain, but the, you know, ramping it up, scaling it up, takes a bit of effort.
Thank you, Miss Sepikas, and I think it's worth noting that, um, going back to the visitor center, that their funding request for last year was less than the previous year. There, it's clear that you guys are assessing what your costs are and what you need, and, um, that it's not just a, oh, we're adding five percent because we're hoping they'll give it to us, or whatever, so.
No, not at all.
Really, really appreciate the detail that you provided in the materials that were submitted and have been published as a part of the packet.
Great.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
And I want to commend you. I'm, I'm greatly hardened by the collaborative process that you put in place, and so we're not operating in these, in these individual shadows, but everybody coming out in the sunlight, so thank you.
Well, Lisa, Patricia, I mean, everybody's just, it's been wonderful, well, and you all too, so, you know, y'all come and help, support, anyway. It's nice to see you there occasionally, everybody, so it's fun. Anything else?
Great.
I'm looking forward to next year.
Councilmember Jackson?
No, I was just going to also, um, commend you for the cooperativeness and for the extent of the exhibits and things. I've, from all the visitors that have come into town, I've talked to several people and have been in the museum when, you know, a lot of those things happen, and it's just been outstanding, but the fact that you're working with the Opera House and with the Art Center and with the community as a whole is very commendable, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Great job. All right, moving on, we're going to go to the Bastrop Opera House. Ms. Holcomb?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Let's see. Is it the big one, the top one? Yeah, here we go. Okay, so in this first slide, I wanted to, um, show you this graph, and, um, our growth over the last three years. You can see in two thousand and sixteen and seventeen, we had one thousand six hundred and four tickets sold, and last season, we had four thousand one hundred and fifty tickets sold, so that was a hundred and fifty-eight percent increase, and this current season, we have already sold seven thousand two hundred and sixty-nine tickets, and we're not done yet, we still have a million.
I think that deserves a round of applause.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Congratulations, and, um, when I've been at the performances, I am continually amazed. I'm always thrilled that you ask if people are there for the first time, and if they're out of town, I'm continually amazed at the percentage of people who have never stepped foot in the Opera House, and you guys are doing such a fantastic job. There's people coming regionally to it, so keep going, but I just wanted you to give you the kudos.
Thank you, I appreciate that. So basically, from six, um, two thousand and sixteen, seventeen, when we really, you know, formed a good, strong board, we've grown over three hundred percent from there to now. Um, hot funds that we've requested for the two thousand and nineteen, twenty season would be used in promoting the art of theater and encouraging attendance of events from out-of-town visitors. That's one thing that I feel that we do very well as we market, and we have managed to really bring in people from outside of Bastrop County, um, really in the masses. Um, so those fundings would be used for production expenses, promoting and marketing, production equipment, and performing arts academy. Um, no theater, community theater, no matter how large or small, can exist off of ticket sales alone. And now that we are growing in attendance, and we have a very strong, secure board, we are getting to the point where we can finally start reaching out and applying for grants. Um, we have a grant writer that just got on board with us, and so we'll be delving into that, um, doing membership drives, and trying to find other ways to, um, support ourselves and be able to put on these quality shows. The new season coming up, this does not include our touring shows. We have several of those that we have booked as well, but, um, our own Terry Lynn Moore will kick off the season with friends and country music, then we'll have Clue the Musical, that's a dinner theater, and yes, it's just like, um, the game Clue, where the audience gets to guess who did it and what with and what room. Um, the greatest Christmas pageant ever, The Wild Woman of Wyandell, we'll have a Valentine Cabaret on Valentine's weekend, Neil Simon's Fools, big musical called Hello My Baby, um, The Odd Couple, female version, exit laughing, and we'll end the season with another big musical, Oliver. And then, like I said, there'll be several touring shows that are, that are put in there as well. So it's really, um, looking like a fantastic season. Over fifty percent of our ticket sales are from outside of Bastrop County. The Bastrop Opera House, as Kay mentioned, will work with the museum and the Art Center on projects that are intended to promote tourism. We're really excited about that and what we've been meeting and coming up with. We're going to have eight season productions, five touring productions, and five special event productions this next season. Oops, sorry. And, does anybody have any questions?
So council, again, back on, uh, page twenty-three, their request last year was ninety-two thousand, and the request this year is one hundred and twenty-six thousand. How, what's the, the number of shows that you have booked for next season? How does that compare to this current season? Just in numbers, do you know?
We have one less season show, but we have two more touring shows coming.
Okay. It's been pretty full. I know that
Oh, yes.
have stayed with business. Councilmember Ennis?
So the difference in the ask is, is basically the, your, uh, increasing promotional effort?
Increasing promotion, um, equipment that we need, the costs that we need to put on the better quality shows to bring in the people.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Holcomb? Councilmember Jackson?
No question, just a compliment, uh, because of the, the quality of the shows, I, when I went to see Newsies recently, I was just floored because of the, uh, the size of the cast, the, uh, you know, the set and everything, the costumes, everything was just very well done. I think it was one of the best productions I've seen at the Opera House of the, and the, uh, just, uh, the grandeur of it all really amazed me that it was happening in our own Bastrop.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah, it was a great show. Any other questions for Ms. Holcomb? Okay, and so your request for this year is one hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. All right, now we're moving on to Lost Pines Art Center, Ms. Randulic. Hold your horses back there, Ms. Moore. She was jumping up, and then she was like, oh, yeah, it's not my turn here.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, City Manager. The Lost Pines Art Center, it's an award-winning building. We bring artistic beauty to Bastrop. We opened the Art Center in December second, two thousand and sixteen. We have a hundred and fifty members with over five thousand volunteer hours, um, docents hanging artwork, doing yard work, committees, and some of these are even chaired by our board members who are hands-on. The mission of the Lost Pines Art Center is the, the creation and appreciation of fine arts, the rich and diverse programs. Our vision is to establish the Lost Pines Art Center as a major arts destination through the creative power of art. Um, we have a variety of programs that are free and open to the public. There's a few of our past exhibits. We have, in the first two years, we've had over fourteen thousand visitors each year. Two thousand and nineteen is not over, we're a fiscal year, January through December, um, but we're on track to meet the same result. Our goal is to exceed those results and build upon that. We have almost twenty-seven hundred who have signed up for a monthly newsletter and thirty-five hundred Facebook followers, as well as social media. Our programs include Artful Weekends, such as Art After Dark, and, um, art exhibits from regionally and nationally known artists. Here's some of our, um, art exhibits for two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and twenty for next year. Our Artful Weekends include featured exhibits of local art, art talks, music, and artful experiences, and glass glowing. Our Art Getaway, which is a family-friendly, culturally-rich event, happens on Saturdays throughout the year. It's immersive, includes kids programming and, um, music performances, and we offer tours. We had a, a Mina Elementary School tour of over two hundred little children, and it was a, it was a fun experience. So here shows some of the different things that we do, the Art After Dark, the Art Getaway, and, um, we have Wine and Unwind, um, our performing arts. So you can see that we have, each of our Artful Weekends, our Art Getaways, are culturally, um, significant. We also have classes, workshops, um, and our art experiences, such as with the Glass Glowing Studio. We offer our facility for venue rental, and we host the Salinas Youth Art Contest, which is a thirty-year tradition of bringing art to children of Bastrop. So, oh, let me go back. This, this, uh, presentation that you see is a little bit different than the one that I had, um, sent, so that's why I'm a little bit off, but, um, with a small staff of only one full-time and two part-time employees, and that includes me, we have over five thousand volunteers with a hundred and fifty members and supportive board, um, they all work on the programs. Did I mention that most of them are free? Um, what does this mean for the community of Bastrop and visitors and tourism? Well, you may have heard, um, that we are entering into a partnership with the Art Institute. Um, we wrote our hot funds request with this partnership in mind, so we're very excited about the potential that this brings. All of our current programs, as well as new programs that we plan to offer, will still continue and become enhanced under the new arrangement. Um, we'll still be able to hang art, have shows, events, and venues. We anticipate even more people will be able to participate during the week, become members, because these are art-related folks, and show artwork and be part of our Artful Weekends. Um, what do we want to do differently and how will the funds be used to accomplish that? We're asking for hot funds to enhance our programs and expand our new programs and offerings. Um, this year, we're going to be collaborating with the Opera House Museum and, um, along with the Visitor Center and, um, Visit Bastrop to create, um, Artful Weekends to draw on the community and tourism as either part of a full-day or multi-day event. In addition to our, um, very talented local artwork, we're planning on bringing more well-known regional and national artists, and we have embarked on a program called the Healing Power of Art, because we know that art, art has the ability to build resilience and well-being through the creation and experience of art. Our focus in the initial development is with the active military veterans and first responders and their families, and we've started building these collaborative partnerships with the Bastrop County Cares, HEB, and others, and we ask the city to join us in partnership with this, um, hot fund application. So I want to thank you for your time and consideration, and ask if you have any questions.
Mr. Randulic, I want to make a, a couple of comments. One, I'm gonna start with the end, with the Healing Power of Arts. I was pretty to a conversation, um, with the Art Institute, and they said that their, um, student population, I believe his number was like thirty-seven to forty percent were veterans, and so, um, when this program was discussed, they were saying that that would blend really well with their student population, and, um, Mr. Randulic and the, their board can answer all of the specifics, but I know there was a public, um, perception that, that AI was taking the entire building, and the glass glowing silos is still going to be yours, you guys are going to have space there, you're working through the details, so, um, when it, it's one thing to take over the whole thing, it's another thing to have a partnership. Um, one of the other discussions I heard was you were talking about the ability to hang art, they were talking about teaching the kids how to run an art gallery, and one of the ways to do that is to be changing out the artwork and using, um, local artists, using student art, and teaching people how to, how to run an art gallery, and so that would be an, yet another reason to go visit the Art Center. Is that your understanding as well with your discussions?
Yes, that is, and we've talked with the folks at Art Institute about, they have a lot of digital arts, so about creating an internship program where our, um, our artists that do the marketing will work with their students to show the students how to do it in practical, um, because you can learn it, but then be able to show how to incorporate it in an actual, you know, social media or marketing setting.
So it's a, it's a, um, the New Republic Studios is immersive in, in the type of work that they do out at the studio, and the intention is that this is equally immersive with what's going on with local artists and with inspiring student artists, and, and I would not be surprised if some of your members didn't end up signing up for some of their classes as well before the whole thing is over. So, uh, council, again, uh, back on page twenty-three, you'll see that the Lost Pines Art Center did not receive any funds last year, so their request this year is one hundred and forty-two thousand, eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Does anyone have any additional questions? Councilmember Rogers?
I understand they didn't receive any, but did they request any last year?
No, they did not.
Okay.
They were in timeout. We're getting everything all resolved. Councilmember Ennis?
Can you define for me, i- is this strictly for operations or exhibits, or, I don't see it line itemed out, so I, um...
Okay, I've got, um, I think you, you probably have this packet, um, five pages, where I have programs, um, art exhibits, um, experiencing Bastrop with the community partnerships, Artful Weekends, tours and demonstrations, um, and art experiences. We have our ven- venue rental service, our Salinas Youth Art Program, our city planned venue usage, healing arts, murals and cultural arts installations, and then we've got the, um, the marketing and promotions, staffing and operations, so, um, the operations part of it is, it, the operations is part of the hot funds application.
So council, for, um, those at home, that, about page forty-three is where the, you see the subcategories that add up to the total.
Okay, thank you.
That answers your question.
I read this, but I wasn't putting it in the record.
Yeah, it's a lot of information, absolutely. And we are not, um, council, you'll note that this agenda item is a work session and briefing, we're not voting on anything tonight, it's so that we understand what the, what the request is for the funds tonight. Councilmember Ennis, did you have further questions?
Thank you.
Councilmember Jackson?
No, again, a great contributor to the community and the projects. I was looking through the new exhibits and the new artists that you're bringing in, and they're stellar, so I look forward to this.
Thank you. Um, I, I do want to note, um, that you have a significant legacy sitting behind you, and we have, uh, we made the, one of the expectations that this council had with providing hot funds to these really critical pieces to our, to the culture of our community is that there be a collaborative effort, and you heard from Ms. Holcomb and also from Miss Sepikas, working with Visit Bastrop and working with each other. So while I appreciate that you said that we intend to do that, I want to be, as the city manager likes to say, abundantly clear, that you will be doing that, or you will not be eligible for funds in the future. It is absolutely the expectation of this council that when we give folks money, that they work together, that they cooperate with each other, and that's the best bang for the buck for the community, and I believe, council, we've discussed that before. If anyone has a, a different opinion, I would welcome you to share that, but I was glad to hear you say that, but I want to make sure you understand that's absolutely the expectation.
And it is the expectation for us as well, and we've already, I've already talked to Kay and Lisa about in the next few weeks, getting together and identifying what those weekends are.
And Visit Bastrop is a great mechanism to help with the marketing for all of the organizations, but it's a lot easier for her to market when she has information in advance, and when you guys are tied out on themes, and, you know, all, all of the other artsy stuff that I am not so great at. Councilmember Jackson?
No, I was just looking at how some of the projects dovetailed with each other, whereas when the Opera House is doing a certain production, it's tying in with an exhibit that's maybe not the same thing, but it's within the same genre and everything, as well as what the museum is doing, and so that, uh, I mean, I see some of the scheduling compared to what I thought was going to happen. It's changed, and I'm so glad to see that, because it'll open up the weekends for people to come together and go from the museum to the Opera House, to the Art Center, and just make a whole weekend of it. So, um, it's tied together very nicely, and I think that is very good.
All right, any other questions? All right, time for the YMCA. Ms. Moore?
And do we want to talk about, we're shifting gears now, this is not hot funds.
Yes, ma'am. The reason YMCA is included tonight, and I appreciate it's slightly confusing, um, this is for anybody that has a contract with us, and the YMCA has a hot, uh, contract. It just so happens that the other, uh, presentations are funded from hot, um, YMCA is funded from the General Fund for Recreational Programming and BP&L for the cost of utilities to run the pool at the state park.
Ms. Moore?
Hi, my name is Terry Moore. I'm with the Bastrop YMCA, and I have the honor of serving as the executive director. What I gave everybody earlier tonight is just basic numbers. We've had a great year. It's been fun. Our numbers have gone up each year, this year significantly. Fitness is up 5%. We serve all ages in fitness, from our young people, teens, to our aging older adults. Our sports participation is up about 25%. The enrichment programs, that number went down when I started putting the numbers together, because some of the programs that we offered that were not getting as much registration, we took away. So we've been able to consolidate some of our programming and get a better return on our cost. And our membership is up 64%, which is pretty impressive. Now, I do want to point out that the number is high this year because the pool was not open last year. So in comparison, it's drastically different. So it's, but it's really up 11% from 17. If you'll notice, there's an aquatics report as part of our contract. We supply the report that we give the Texas Parks and Wildlife for attendance. If you'll look at this chart, really, I want to bring your attention to the very last page. And if you'll notice that in 17, for the entire season, we served 10,863 adults and 11,375 children in 17. And that was with a full season open. With the pool not open, you notice the big difference. We went from 10,000 to 6,400 for adults and 11,000 to 49. So it's significantly, that the pool serves a significant amount of people. The 19 numbers that you see here are only May and June. So we're close to half for the season without July, August, and September. So we're doing well this year. Wanted to point out some of the free community programming that we do in partnership. We do organize and facilitate the Halloween Festival. We're excited, planning has already started for that event. There's already vendors signed up, so we're super excited. The holiday Santa party, the movies in the park, the movies, we had one this past Saturday. I think it was, what was it, not the hottest day of the year last Saturday? But we went forward and showed a movie. We've had two tennis clinics this year, and these clinics are free. And we've served 48 local youth. When I say 48 local youth, it's really 48 local residents. Because her, it's, you know, your actual physical age depends on your mental age, right? These people are out there learning the game, and they can, our active older adults have gotten real involved, as well as pickleball. Pickleball has really been a good thing for us. We also serve with Casa de Amigo, which is a program that is held out at Linden Street at the Housing Authority, Boost with the Friendship Bible Baptist Church, and then the Hands Held High Ministry. We do programming out there every other Saturday night. We did host Healthy Kids Day event this year and the National Yoga Day, which was super cool. We'll include more locations next year. One of those locations was the Art Center. And I'm going to take this opportunity to say collaboration's what makes us great. Partnerships have, is the reason the YMCA has been able to do what we've been able to do, because we partner with all of these organizations. And I'm grateful for the opportunity to do that. And it's rare in a small community to have such great collaboration. So I'm truly grateful, and I'm really, truly grateful for the collaboration and the things that we're able to do to serve the community. We do socials every Monday afternoon at 1:30. Those are free events. You just come in, it's a dance one week, games the next week. We celebrate birthdays. We do powerful tools for caregivers and savvy tools. Powerful tools is for caregivers, any caregiver, while savvy tools is for dementia patients and caregivers. Those programs are very impactful. When you're a caregiver, you forget to take care of yourself. And so the part of that is helping bring that to life. New programs for this past year have been, we do offer a Silver Sneaker class twice a year. We did add many summer camps for, we had a total of 13 this summer, and they were a big hit. Lot of different themes, as you can see there. We did, we added Quick Cook, the monthly, we do monthly CPR classes. Gymnastics was a big add. We did a women's self-defense class, which the next one's coming up on September the 22nd, if you're interested. We'll be doing that at the outdoor fitness unit. Adult soccer made this year, Yipiau Ka'ee. That's a big win for us. And we also do a lot of art programs and stuff for ages 10 to 99. This year, we are hoping to be able to offer a golf program. I've been contacted by several members of the community. Last year, the city requested that we come up with a way to offer a golf program to our community, along with tennis. Golf is one of those sports that are considered a rich man's game. But there's an enormous amount of scholarships available for these kids if they learn the game. By the time they get into middle school, late middle school, to play at school, it's a little late for them to hone in on their skills, to be able to go into competition for these scholarships. So what we're hoping is that we can provide these free programs, let them get a taste of the game, figure out what it is and see if they like it so they can start developing that. There's not another program that I'm aware of in the community that provides that. So we did, we were able to contact a couple of the golf courses this year and got some numbers put together. And that's an additional $3,000 that we'd like to add to our request this year to be able to offer that program a couple of times in the year. You know, John Wanamaker said, "People who cannot find time for recreation are obliged sooner or later to find time for illness." At the YMCA, we recognize that having a healthy community is not just about physical health. It's physical, mental, and spiritual health that are equally important. It's about happy, confident kids. It's about stable families, that's a big one. It's about neighbors helping each other. It's about organizations collaborating together to serve. We strive to be an active part of building a stronger Bastrop by providing opportunities to the residents, whether it's exposure to a new sport, providing an opportunity to be creative and unique, or just providing a safe, nonjudgmental space. Educating families on nutrition and exercise. We're here to serve Bastrop. I'm going to throw one more quote at you, because I thought this was a good one. Walt Disney said, "In my view, wholesome pleasure, sport, and recreation are vital to this nation as productive work, are vital to this nation as productive work and should have a large share in the national budget." I just thought I'd throw that out there.
I think Disney does have a large share of the national budget.
Yeah, we are grateful for the opportunity to partner.
Thank you very much, Ms. Moore. For clarity, last year, you received 79,800. Your request is 79,800 plus?
Plus 3,000.
So your request is for 82,800?
Yes, ma'am.
And city manager, this, the 79,800 of last year did not, I would assume, does not include what BP&L pays for utilities out at the pool? Or is that number?
It does include the 30, that is part of that, yes, ma'am.
But I will tell you, her request came in a day late and a dollar short, because the budget was done when she called. So it is not in my proposed budget.
Okay. And we haven't voted on that yet, but you're saying when we're looking through the numbers...
Yes, ma'am, but when you see it in about 10 minutes, you're going to know it's not here. Because it was done by the time she submitted that.
I got you, I got you, okay. Council, any, Councilmember Jackson?
No, I was just, I was glad to see the inclusion of golf, you know, along with the swimming and the tennis, because those are lifelong sports. And we have a bunch of people in town that try to continue that, some of the golfers that started when they were in high school or even in junior high and continued. I was looking at your free community programming, and I didn't see, something that really impressed me last year was your Easter Egg Hunt.
Oh, that's true. Let me write that in the margin here, Easter Egg Hunt.
Yes, it was a great community effort, and a lot of people were out for it. I was glad to see the number of kids out there for that, so.
We also partner with the Big Game Day with the library. So the library is also, thank you for pointing that out.
Any other questions, Council, sorry, Mayor Pro Tem Nelson?
Well, it's obvious you're doing a fantastic job in leading the Y. Are you the same Terry Moore that's going to be performing, the future performer at the Opera House in September?
Yes, I am.
What a, what a great collaboration, thank you.
Yes, thank you so much for pointing that out.
Patricia, you're required to perform, oh, sorry. Any other questions for the YMCA? All right, thank you very much, Ms. Moore. We do have a citizen signed up to speak on this item, Mr. Goldsmith. If you would state your name and address for the record, and you will have three minutes. Welcome.
Thank you, Council, thank you for your hard work. I don't have my reading glasses, so I may be reading this pretty close. As we all know, the first and every expenditure must directly enhance and promote tourism in the convention and hotel industry to qualify for hot funds. I just want to point out, this activity may result from hotel or convention center guests that are already in town and choose to attend the hotel tax-funded facility or arts or historical event. And of course, if people come and spend the night, we understand that. So many of our programs qualify because we may not actually be putting heads in beds, but people are coming here and are more likely to access the convention center or hotels. I bring that up because this year, we're really talking about multiple funding streams of this particular agenda item. So three people have applied for hot funds, makes sense. By definition, they perfectly qualify. Then, of course, we have the YMCA, separate issue, no contest. My concern is, last year, we removed three programs that I thought qualified for hot funds from the budget. And that was the Independence Day event, the Juneteenth event, and the rodeo, which I do believe bring people in, and they do see, may be more likely to come and spend the night at another time. So I think they qualify. So this pertains to what's coming over the next item, which is the budget itself. So in theory, according to what I've read, we can fund hot fund events or whatever. If we choose not to put it into hot funds, we can fund it through general revenue, general property tax revenue, general sales tax revenues, and franchise fee revenues. And I'm assuming BP&L is a franchise fee revenue? Thank you. So as we move forward, it is possible that you may decide somewhere down the line that any three of these projects warrants drawing down from general fund and/or franchise fees. This is probably not a popular thing to do with most citizens. We were told many years ago, when the convention center was built, hot funds would only be used. And it's only hot funds. Well, you know, we have put a lot of stress on hot funds. That budget has grown. We've got our advertising and marketing agency, huge budget and all that. So we're starting to have some push and pull on that, which in turn may lead to more projects funded through general revenue or franchise fees. And I just want to make that point, that's all. I'm not going to split hairs. I think the budget will yield what it yields, and people will have a chance to comment. But I just wanted to make that point now, so people are aware and thinking. And that's it. And so you're aware and thinking.
Thank you, Mr. Goldsmith. Appreciate it. Okay, I have had, Council, it is 7:57, and I've had a request for a bio break. So it's 7:57, and we are going to go to recess and come back with item 8C. We'll take a five-minute break. Okay, it is 8:03, we are back in session, and we are on item 8C. Received briefing on the city manager's submitted budget for fiscal year 2019 as required by the city's charter. Council, you've got your wonderful notebooks. Super kudos to staff for the tabs and everything. That will make it a whole lot easier on council. And for the public, I believe this will be uploaded and available in the morning.
Yes, ma'am. There is a hard copy of the budget in the city secretary's office in the library, and it will be online on the city's website first thing in the morning.
It's all yours.
Mayor and Council, this is always a hectic time of the year. And last year, we ran around with our hair on fire. And so we went back and we built a pretty extensive calendar and followed it. We thought great. What we failed to factor in this year, last year, was the fact that there was going to be the 86th legislative session by our esteemed legislature. And so we were rocking along, thought we had everything figured out. And then we started watching the tremendous number of bills being filed that impacted C services. And essentially, our hair's on fire again tonight. So I'll talk to you about that as we go along. One of the things that I do want to, all right, let's see. Colin, can you get me back to the beginning there, if you'd serve? One of the things that I want to start off with is the fact that the city charter, Article 6, Financial Procedures, Section 6.02, Preparation and Submission of the Budget, states that the city manager, at least 30 days, which in this case would be August 31st, prior to the commencement of the fiscal year, shall prepare and submit a budget to council, which shall contain items 1 through 5. And I'm pleased to submit this budget to you tonight in compliance with the city charter well in advance of the deadline. As I mentioned, the cities, in my opinion, have come under assault as a result of the 86th legislative session. There are going to be six specific bills that I talked to you about this evening that are approved pieces of legislation that I believe have detrimental impact to local control and long-term fiscal sustainability of municipalities across this state. Since my hiring in March of 2017 under the direction of city council, we have embarked on building a long-term strategic plan to make Bastrop fiscally sustainable while planning for the next 100 years. Literally, with the stroke of a pen, whether actually signed by the governor or just allowed to go into effect, the futures of cities changed overnight. And in doing so, our strategic plan was significantly altered. Because the state legislature ended on May 27th, and the governor has 20 days to sign or veto a bill, it was late June before we truly could start to understand the impact of the 86th legislative session. The fiscal year 2020 budget for the city of Bastrop must be completed and presented to you by our calendar on August 13th. If you do the math, that is less than six weeks after the passage of legislation requiring cities, especially smaller ones, to feverishly modify operations to accommodate these requirements. That is, in essence, the meeting tomorrow evening and your epic, epic, epic agenda. Because the impact of these bills is significant, and there is limited time to understand the ramifications of our long-term fiscal sustainability, we're essentially this evening going to present to you the fiscal year 2019 budget with several modifications. We are already in the process of starting fiscal year 2021's budget, and we will do so immediately upon the conclusion of this budget. And it is our hope that we can bring you some policy options to begin to address long-term fiscal sustainability next spring and summer. So with that in mind, I want to talk to you about the impacts of the 86th legislative session on long-term control, of local government control and long-term fiscal sustainability. To provide a specific example on the detrimental impact to local control, Texas Municipal League Legislative Update dated June 7th, 2019, puts Senate Bill 2 into perspective. Consider that the state budget passed this session will grow state general revenues supported by state taxes by at least 9.5% more than the budget passed two years ago, and perhaps higher, depending on how the numbers are calculated. No vote of the people was held to sanction that growth. Yet cities must take increases over 3.5% to their voters. The only possible explanation for that cognitive dissonance is that the state legislature thinks their decisions are superior to those of local officials, end quote. The elimination of unilateral annexation is extremely detrimental to our future. Bastrop is a community with an unusually large extraterritorial jurisdiction spanning 145.7 square miles. As development occurred, it was logical to assume that portions of the city's ETJ would be annexed over the next 10, the next 50 to 100 years or so. Building Bastrop and the adoption of the Bastrop Building Block Codes, which has been an insignificant portion of our 2019 workload, is being created to serve as an important foundation for long-term fiscal sustainability as the city grows through development of its existing nine-and-a-half square miles and annexation of our ETJ. Annexation has always been a key component of any city's ability to expand while growing its tax base. Bastrop is just under 10 square miles, and will stay that way for the foreseeable future. If I were to conduct a SWOT analysis, that's strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats, our ability to no longer utilize our ETJ is a significant threat to us for several reasons. One, upstream development will pose a serious threat to downstream flooding of Bastrop. Two, our infrastructure continues to age, so we will now have to become fiscally sustainable within our existing nine-and-a-half square miles. And now that we cannot annex, we must reevaluate current development standards in our ETJ. As we work through this issue and its impact on future development, I anticipate that the list of threats will grow. There are two bills, House Bill 31... There are two bills, House Bill 3167 and House Bill 852, which I'll talk about in a moment, are really the basis of your special meeting tomorrow evening. Lastly, House Bill 1152, that essentially allows companies that provide both cable and phone services to stop paying the lesser of the state cable franchise or telephone access fees. This will cost us $50,000 this year. Council recently authorized the city to join statewide lawsuits of other cities because we believe this law is unconstitutional. So, let's start with Senate Bill 2. And I have indicated our representatives and who voted, and I did that as public information, and depending on how you feel about this bill, you can process the accountability factor to suit you. Senate Bill 2 is a yes vote by Representative John Siria, who is listed as a House Bill sponsor, and it was voted against by Senator Kirk Watson. This bill takes effect January 2020 and lowers the city's property tax rollback from 8% to 3.5% with an automatic election required to exceed that percentage. As the concession, the bill allows three years of banking of any unused rollback increments. It does guarantee a $500,000 levy increase threshold for most cities under 30,000 population without triggering a rollback election. It's important to note that while we may not count under Senate Bill 2 today, we didn't count under the annexation legislation last legislative session. We were granted a pass that was revoked this year, so we might have dodged the bullet this time. I don't anticipate we'll dodge that bullet in the future. House Bill 347, voted yes by Representative John Siria, voted against by Senator Kirk Watson, takes effect immediately. When it was approved, it immediately went into effect, and that essentially removed our allocation, or our ability to do unilateral annexation. So now, annexation is allowed one of three ways: on the request of owner of the land, an area with a population of less than 200 by petition of voters, and if required, owners in that same area; and three, an area with a population of at least 200 by the election of voters, and if required, a petition of landowners. My comment to citizens choosing to be annexed by the city leads me to believe that there is a situation that they have that they need financial assistance with, and typically that is infrastructure that is in poor repair. So, if we can't take care of what we've got, why would we want to annex once it can't fiscally sustain itself? Which is why I believe annexation today is a non-starter. House Bill 852, voted on by yes by Representative John Siria and Senator Kirk Watson. Essentially, this bill, also effective immediately, indicated that residential building permit fees cannot be based on the value of the dwelling, the cost of constructing, or improving the dwelling. We can't require disclosure of that information related to the value of cost of constructing or improving residential dwellings as a condition for obtaining a building permit, except as required by FEMA for participation in the National Flood Insurance. It has been an industry standard that cities assess fees based on valuations, and this essentially has ruled our fees noncompliant with state law, which is why we will have a significant presentation with you tomorrow evening. Senate Bill 1152 was a no vote by Representative John Siria. There is no record that Senator Kirk Watson voted on this particular matter. As I mentioned, effective September 1st, companies that provide both cable and telephone service are allowed to stop paying the lesser of the two. It will cost us $50,000, and we believe it is unconstitutional on the basis that cities are prohibited by the Texas Constitution from using public tax dollars to fund private purposes. House Bill 2439 was voted yes by Representative Siria and a no vote by Senator Kirk Watson. And effective September 1st, cities may not adopt or enforce rules, charters, ordinances, building codes, or any regulations that prohibit or limit the use of installation of a building product or material that is approved for use by a national code published within the last three code cycles. Now, this sounds fairly benign, but far. Everybody, I believe, appreciates the size and significant environmental differences in the great state of Texas. You can be in the piney woods of East Texas where it is lush and humid, and drive 10 hours and be in the Panhandle, whereas I call it is God's country, because nobody but God would live out there with the dirt and the wind and the just flat plains. And it's hard to imagine that local control looks the same on building conditions in East Texas that it does in West Texas. West Texas have extraordinary storms relative to dust, tornadoes, very different than the floods required in East Texas. And local councils need the ability to make local choices about the building codes that suit their environment, and this essentially removed that local control. And then last, but certainly not least, House Bill 3167, voted affirmatively by both Representative John Siria and Senator Kirk Watson. Effective September 1st, state law requires that a subdivision development plan, subdivision construction plans, site plans, land development applications, and plaits, general plaits, replat be approved within 30 days of submission, or they are deemed approved. A municipal authority must now provide a written statement stating why we are giving a conditional approval or a reason for denial. The law is very clear that if we are sued, the burden of proof is ours. So, much of what you are seeing tomorrow is all of our rules and regulations now must be adopted. There is no ability to be flexible, there is no ability for us to issue comments, if you will. The clock starts the minute we get a set of plans. So this will have a tremendous impact on the building Bastrop block codes that we had built to be flexible and run some things concurrently. The state law has now removed that piece from our abilities. So, we are working with our consultant to ensure that the technical manual for Bastrop Building Block Codes represents the now requirements that you will have to rule and make decisions on. So certainly, some significant challenges that we are having to assess, address, and make arrangements for in literally less than six weeks of time. The most disconcerting thing for me about House Bill 3167 is size is not a factor here. I hope everybody appreciates the infrastructure that cities such as Austin, San Antonio, Houston, Fort Worth, and Dallas have at their disposal, just given their sheer size. They have staff that are assigned very specific duties that are better prepared to meet this 30-day requirement. Small cities like Bastrop, Smithville, Giddings, maybe Giddings only has somebody half-time on their staff, it doesn't matter, the size doesn't matter, you get 30 days to review this. So we are in the process of bringing to you tomorrow night a very holistic change in how we do business, so that we can accommodate what I'm calling is concierge service. It has to be first and foremost of what we do, because if we don't do our jobs, it's deemed approved. And the one policy decision that y'all have been emphatic about since we started building Bastrop is that we will not build detrimental development in this community, period. So it is foremost in our process that we will address whatever walks in the door in that 30-day time period to assure the citizens that will live with that investment for many decades to come, that it's as safe as possible and meets the codes that you have worked on. So, this is a preemption of tomorrow night and the epic journey, but we had to address all of this so we could then determine its impact on the budget that I am presenting to you this evening. So, we are starting with fiscal year 2019 as the foundation for the 2020 budget. As I mentioned, it is a bridge. We have had a fiscal sustainability strategic plan, and now we have to assess where it is. So, what we're doing in 2019 are the things we know we must do until we can figure out how to fund long-term sustainability next year. So, because the 2019 budget is where we're going to start, I want to brag a minute. We made substantial modifications to last year's budget, and Mr. Goldsmith was here last Tuesday and bragged on the open and transparency of this budget, and I'm delighted because that is exactly the basis of the Government Finance Officer Association Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. There are 26 elements in this application that you must read and you must meet, and all of them are intended to provide a much higher level of transparency than has existed. It was in our fiscal sustainability, I mean, our fiscal responsibility work plan for fiscal year 2019, and we are delighted that about a week and a half ago, we were notified that we had indeed achieved this recognition, and that's the first time in this city's history to receive that, so it's quite the undertaking. We have followed that same model, because if it ain't broke, don't fix it, so fiscal year 2020 will be built around the same presentation style. So, as a starting point, we need to reconcile 20, we need to reconcile the 2019 budget in order to have the starting point for 2020. Last year, we budgeted about $172,000 in organizational for salary savings. We had a number of new positions. We knew that it would take some time to post and get those hired, and so we had savings of $172,254. We have zeroed out all of the salary savings and now returned to that funding level to 100%. We anticipate that we will continue to run at 100%. The one position that was funded last year that we have not filled is the council liaison, and as I have said to y'all on numerous occasions, that is a product of space. We literally have every office in City Hall across the street, across the parking lot, full with city staff that we have added. Terry Moore with the YMCA used to have an office at the City Hall, we had to ask her to move, we moved her across the street, and we've had to ask her to move, and so we don't even have space for some of our partners. But, the unfinished portion of City Hall is being remodeled, and we anticipate that that should be completed in October, and there will be office space available, and that position will be filled. In the fiscal year 2019 budget, there are two vacant positions that will be frozen and not funded in 2020. Those positions include the Assistant Finance Director, as well as the Hospitality and Downtown Director, which was funded 25% by the general fund. There are part-time fire personnel that was included in the Innovation Fund in the amount of $82,000 that's now included, so let me say this correctly. The part-time fire personnel was funded at $82,000 in the Innovation Fund in 2019. It is now included in the fiscal year 2020 General Fund in the Fire Department as a part of reoccurring expenses. So, part-time fire is now in the general fund tax rate. Laserfish licenses that were funded in 2019 in the Innovation Fund of $11,495 are now included in the Information Technology Budget as a reoccurring expense. These licenses are used for our paperless records management system. In 2019, there were $315,000 of unbudgeted expenses that have been covered by additional salary savings and unspent expenditures. Staff anticipated in the April-May timeframe that these expenditures could occur. We put together an operational plan, and we have monitored monthly. There is $100,000 in litigation expenses that have been paid for for the Van Diver settlement. It's important to note that we didn't budget those, because there was no way of knowing the timing of the payments per the agreement. So, once we knew that they would be paid, we have accounted for them. Our city attorney fees are projected to be about $415,000, which is 215,000 more than was budgeted, due to the significant amount of work that was accomplished in 2019 associated with the building Bastrop codes, the moratorium, the 1445 ordinance with Bastrop County, the grandfathering ordinance, the storm drainage ordinance. We had contract reviews for all of our engineering contracts that we've done for all of our CIP projects, just to name a few. The increase in attorney fees are due really to one-time projects and are not anticipated to be reoccurring expenses in 2020, so they have been left at the 2019 level. A budget amendment will be required in September to cover these expenses, but we need a better grasp of final numbers, but those are our projections at this point. When you look at organization, there is a $537,625 increase in the 2019 year-end projected when compared to the 2019 budget. And I have put some information specifically in my budget memo to reconcile that number. It goes back to the $215,000 for legal fees, the $100,000 for the payment of the Van Diver settlement, $172,000 for salary savings, and the remaining $69,400 is related to the thoroughfare plan that y'all approved mid-year. It is accounted for in this line item, as well as expenses related to the Ramos Restaurant that was declared a dangerous building. So, let's talk about revenue assumptions for the general fund overview. Proposed revenues for fiscal year 2020 are $12,030,370, which represents a 3.5% increase, or $410,552 over fiscal year 2019 year-end projected. The funding in the general fund is derived from 10 major categories. I won't go over all of them, but the two most significant are sales tax, which is 42%, and ad valorem taxes, which is 32%. One of the big changes that we will be talking about this evening and tomorrow night is cost recovery through fees. We are proposing that development fees cover 75% of the actual cost. Cities are prohibited by the Texas Constitution from using public tax dollars to fund private purposes, which is why development fees are necessary. We have spent time the last couple of weeks, and staff has a very detailed presentation for you tomorrow evening, on the development-related activities, and the information I'm going to provide you this evening is based on the budget we're proposing that will accommodate the changes necessary to make us be able to meet House Bill 3167. So, total cost in the 2020 budget that is allocated to development-related expenses is roughly $1,085,000. In 2019, license and fee permits are projected to be $518,367, which is less than 50% of the cost. So that essentially means that the city of Bastrop residents are subsidizing development by more than 50%. We are recommending that a policy be established that the development fees be covered by 75% from the development community and 25% subsidy from the general fund in order to keep your typical residential permits at a low cost. I have visited with the city attorney's office, and if there is a public purpose, we are allowed to do that, and certainly, taxes paid to cover fees would merit a reduced rate. So, essentially, what that will allow is for the day-to-day permits for small trades such as plumbing, you need to get your hot water heater fixed, some kind of mechanical or electrical issue, certificates of appropriateness, or lots of records review. We will keep those at today's low cost, recognizing that the citizens are contributing to the cost and overhead of development. So, tomorrow evening, staff will do a detailed presentation of our proposed fee increase. There are a couple of things noteworthy about the presentation. The first is, is we have evaluated our existing fees, and we will be allocating additional costs to those based on what we now know development review is likely to be. The second thing is, is that there are a number- The second thing is, is that there are a number of fees that we should be charging for that are not on our fee schedule. So we'll point those out to you tomorrow night so that we can now start charging appropriately for services that we're providing. One of the things that is stunning to me and perhaps is part of the reason the legislature is in uproar about fees, I am stunned at what the city of Austin charges for their development fees. It is an attachment to your agenda packet tomorrow evening. Clearly, those fees are extraordinary, but Austin remains one of the top destinations to relocate in the country. So what they're charging in fees is in no way detrimental to the development that is occurring. So I point that out to tell you that what we're going to propose tomorrow is nowhere close to Austin, but it's worth noting that they are charging exorbitant rates, getting them, and development is not slowing down. So the point of this is, we're not covering the cost of our fees and we need to fix that. The next item that I want to talk to you about is a proposed non-residential library fee effective January 1st. Our library costs $741,267. 21.7% of our registered users are citizens of Bastrop. The remaining portion do not live in this community. So said this way, we make up 22% of the registered users and pay $732,767 of the total budget. The remaining $8,500 comes from an annual county grant. So we are proposing that a non-resident service fee be instituted January 1st, 2020. We have taken a very conservative approach and we appreciate that there's almost 9,000 non-resident users and we've assumed the revenue included in this budget on just 3,000 of those 9,000 returning. So that is a significantly conservative estimation. We are proposing that our annual non-city library card fee be $25 and that a six-month non-city library fee be $15. And a six-month fee allows us to accommodate the state park snowbirds that come to town and enjoy a season, like to utilize the library, they can do so at a reduced fee. It's important for us to appreciate the value of a library. A library card gets you access to unlimited information merely by walking through the doors of our library. So one of the things that our library staff will be doing is calculating on average the number of materials that a cardholder would check out and assigning a value. And it's not unreasonable to assume that you check out between $500 and $1,000 worth of materials simply with your card. When you think about it, there are many monthly subscription services such as Netflix that cost $15 a month and we just don't bat an eye, we subscribe to Netflix or Hulu or whatever because it has value. So when you take that $25 annual cost and divide it monthly, for a little over $2, you're getting substantial value and access to information free of charge. So essentially, our staff would spend October, November, and December reaching out to our non-citizens to communicate the value of the library in hopes that they appreciate what the $25 looks like. So I'm anticipating that we're going to hear from all of our county residents who say, "But I do pay taxes. I pay sales tax." And yes, yes, they do. We have a wonderful retail trade area of 2,600 square miles that funds our sales tax, which is just over $5 million. That retail trade area is served by just over 198,000 people. So when you take $5,084,400 and you divide it by the retail trade area of 198,251 people, that comes out to an annual total sales tax per capita of $25.64 per year. In comparison, our taxpayers who live here will pay $1,156 in 2019 based on the average home value of $204,937. So yes, they do contribute, but they use our streets, they use our libraries, our emergency medical services, and certainly we need to ensure that we are recovering our cost from our fees. So we are proposing a non-resident library fee effective January 1st. Regarding the 2020 expenditure synopsis of the general fund, the proposed general fund expenditures for fiscal year 2020 are $12,030,370, which represents an increase of 4.8%, or just over $556,000 over year-end, 2019 year-end projected. So I want to talk just a moment about some of the increases in context of categories, if you will. There's an increase in personnel cost when compared, well, let me say it this way, there's an increase of $820,206 in fiscal year 2020 personnel cost when compared to fiscal year 2019 year-end projections. And please remember that we had about $445,000 in salary savings that's been added back to make all of that square. So all of the positions are 100% funded and there is $374,861 that represents 4.4 new positions and 2.5% staff increase for employees. When you look at supplies and materials, there's a $106,776 increase in 2020 when compared to 2019 year-end projections. Included in that is money that we allocate every year for emergency management. We have a line item that we hope we never have to use, but we have it in the event we have some type of emergency that's unplanned for. So $29,000 was earmarked for that, was not needed. The remaining $77,776 represents the departmental expenditures that were planned to not be spent as a part of our operational plan to cover the overage that was noted earlier. There is also an increase of $101,891 in 2020 contingency costs when compared to 2019 year-end projections. And this one is easy, but it's complex and Tracy and I have debated on how to explain this. So every year, our financial policy requires $35,000 to be allocated for contingency. So there was $35,000 last year, it's going to be $35,000 this year. So you have to add it and then subtract it. And the balance is the salary savings. So we have put information in the packet to help answer that question when you get there and go, "Well, what's driving that?" It's the salary savings. So salary increases. There is a 2.5% salary increase, which totals just over $79,000 in the general fund to maintain the city's compensation plan. And I want to brag just a moment when we're talking salaries and benefits. Bastrop, well, let me say it this way, in 2020, I will have been doing this 30 years. And Bastrop is the only city that I have ever worked in where health insurance goes down. Every place else, it goes up and it goes up hugely. It goes up 10%, 20%, 40%, you're figuring out how to cut the plan. This year, we're seeing a 3% reduction in health insurance. That is unheard of. Our health advisors, you know, just look at us and just say, "Y'all are such an anomaly." Well, we are and I attribute that to the fabulous employees that we have. We have the Compass Medical Services, which is a medical concierge and it helps our employees shop services, make sure that we're not paying more than we need to, and we have saved more than $130,000 in claims since the inception last year. We are a small organization and $130,000 is real money. Our employees take this seriously, they appreciate the resource challenges that we face every year and they are very good fiscal users of our services. So I want to tip my hat to them for that 3% reduction in health benefits. Let's talk about the Fire Department. Back in April, Chief Rosales did an outstanding presentation on the needs of the Fire Department and I explained to you at that time that the Fire Department would be my number-one budget priority and that is indeed the case. There are a number of things included in this budget to address the long list of issues that he brought to everyone's attention. The first is, we see a distinct difference in response times from the daytime to the nighttime. During the day, we have paid staff that works 12-hour shifts, seven days a week. Andreas not, is it 10 or 12 hours? It is 12. And so during the day, we have somebody here, so when the call comes out, there is a really positive response time, assuming that we're not already tied up on another issue. What we are experiencing is a very significant increase in our nighttime response. We rely on volunteers and depending on their work schedule and the time of the call, our response time can be significantly impacted. For those of us that took an oath to protect and serve, that is not a good place for us to be. So included in the budget is part-time fire personnel for nighttime coverage. So essentially, what that means is, is that there will always be two people on duty at the fire station 24/7/365 so that we can maintain appropriate response times. Included in the budget is $3.5 million worth of new fire equipment. And yes, I did say $3.5 million. We have available capacity in the city's debt fund in 2020, 2021, and part of 2022 that will allow us to purchase the $3.5 million worth of fire equipment without raising taxes. One of the things that Chief Rosales talked about in April and we'll discuss again next Tuesday at our budget meeting is the challenging state of our fire equipment. We all can appreciate, we're living on borrowed time. Engine 11 has been down 142 days this year. So it doesn't matter whether the repair costs $100, $300, $3,000, $30,000. We don't have an engine, we can't respond well. We are extraordinarily blessed that ESD 2 has a reserve engine that they have graciously lent us, but they're going to become weary of letting us use their equipment, so we need to replace ours. Chief Rosales and Chief Gill, who is the Fire Chief with ESD #2, organized a show-and-tell of fire equipment a week and a half or two weeks ago. And there are some really substantial changes being made by the fire service to shorten the wheel bases of equipment so that they work for the Bastrop building block codes. Part of what we're trying to do is reduce the size of roads so that they're more fiscally sustainable and that runs contra to the way the fire service likes to run. They like big, wide roads, they like 50-foot big aerial ladder trucks and the turning radius that's huge and so I applaud Chief Rosales and his team for being good partners in our future fiscal sustainability. So the $3.5 million is two pumpers. Both of ours are challenging, Engine 11 is challenged, so we would replace both of the pumpers. And we all appreciate and recognize the need for an aerial ladder truck for response. The last time we needed one, the response from Travis County was 33 minutes. If you have a multi-story facility, and what comes to mind is the three-story senior living facility on Old Austin Highway and the four-story hotels that we have at Hampton Inn, Holiday Inn, and the Comfort Inn. Right now, we would be challenged to evacuate anything more than two stories. We had a situation with one of our hotels a couple of weeks ago that probably aged Chief Rosales a decade or so en route because we really thought one of the hotels had a fire on the fourth story. Fortunately, it was a fan and it put itself out, but it did cause all of us to stop and think, "We might be one call short if we don't address the aerial ladder." In addition to the fire equipment, there is a need for self-contained breathing apparatus. You might note that we had put in the Innovation Fund last year buying rehabilitated equipment, but once Chief Rosales and his team further evaluated that equipment, it was an awful lot of money for the short time span that that breathing equipment could be used. So we did not fund those projects and are recommending that we buy this equipment new. All of the pieces that I've talked about, the three pieces of fire equipment and the self-contained breathing apparatus have useful lives in excess of 10 years. So next Tuesday at the August 20th budget meeting, Chief Rosales is going to talk to you about the proposed equipment purchases, what they look like. We have worked hard to be very fiscally prudent in the financing of these, so we've looked at long-term extended warranties, including preventative maintenance, so that our equipment is maintained at the appropriate specification. These are very complex pieces of equipment and only as good is how they are maintained. So in order to make sure that we get 15-plus years' life out of this equipment, he has factored that into the purchase as well. Tracy Waldron will do a detailed presentation on the proposed financing arrangements. So all of the particulars relative to these items will be worked out before you take any action on the budget. The next item that is included in the fiscal year 2020 budget is adding 4.4 full-time equivalents. The first position is a construction manager. I'm sure you can appreciate the need for all of our new construction to be inspected. Whether it is a city project or a public improvement project, we need to be confident that the construction was built according to the approved plans so that we can have an asset that will meet or exceed its expected useful life. And given the amount of development that's anticipated to occur in this community as well as our own capital projects, we feel like this is a prudent position. I will tell you that as with all positions, much like the Assistant Finance Director and the Hospitality Director, we will evaluate annually these positions. And so once we get through our capital improvement programs and perhaps growth diminishes in the next three to five years, this would be a position that we would evaluate, but today, we desperately need it. We're also recommending a full-time fire inspector slash assistant fire chief. Today, we only have one full-time employee in the Fire Department and that is Chief Rosales. We need a dual position. The Bastrop building codes now rely on the International Code Council, which includes the international fire codes. And so with the development changes, we need a full-time fire inspector that will not only help with plan reviews, but fire inspections to make sure all of our buildings are safe and built to code. I'm sure many of you have read about the very tragic story of five children that died in a daycare fire in the North and that just underscores the importance of fire inspections and making sure buildings are built to code. The slash to this position is the Assistant Fire Chief. Because Chief Rosales is the only full-time employee, he responds to everything 24/7/365. I happen to like Chief Rosales and I hope that he has a long future with us, but if we keep running him 24/7/365, he's going to burn out pretty quick. So this position would be able to give some on-call time off so that they can schedule and plan and provide some flexibility to a work-life balance that we all appreciate. The part-time fire personnel that would work nights, round-the-clock coverage, is 2.1 full-time equivalents. We have also increased the part-time human resource executive assistant from 25 to 30 hours. There are a number of HR projects that we need some additional depth to... There are a number of HR projects that we need some additional depth to be able to handle, and that just is product of our growth. The library personnel is, there, excuse me, is a library associate position that will expand from 32 hours to 40 hours. And then we had a decrease of minus .02 in the seasonal part-time, because it was a calculation error, and we like things to balance. Information technology, as I mentioned, there are 15 new licenses for Laserfish that is included in the amount of $13,000. There are two expenditures that are funded in the Police Department. The first is field training officer pay in the amount of $7,500. It is customary to pay officers when they step up to serve as field training officers, additional stipend, because training new hires is a lot of work. They have to essentially follow a training schedule, they have to document performance, they have to coach, they have to be accountable to the sergeants and the command staff on how that recruit is performing, and that is a lot of work in addition to their patrol duties. So this $7,500 would be available when we have new hires, it doesn't happen often, but would be available, so the field training officers that step up know we appreciate and value that work. And then the next item pains me greatly that it's needed, but it is essential, I believe, in today's time. There are $16,212 for rifle-resistant helmets. So essentially, we provide Kevlar vests, and this would add a ballistic head protection for our officers. So if they were to have to respond to some type of active shooter situation, they would be protected not only with body armor, but with helmets. There is a solid waste charge that will be increasing. The city's financial policy requires that we pass through fee increases associated with external services, such as sanitation fees. There are contract provisions with our sanitary waste taller on what that process looks like. They've met it. So after effective 10-1, our residential fees will go from $16.05 to $16.85 a month. An additional cart would go from $5.25 to $5.51, and the additional recycling bin will go from $2.10 to $2.20. In the Vehicle Equipment Replacement Fund, back in April, Chief Nagy made a detailed presentation on the needs for new police patrol and command vehicles. And you might recall that some extensive research was done between the Chevy Tahoe, the Ford Explorer, the Dodge Dakota, and I think there was some vehicle that escaped me that was, I think, Chevy Impala or something. And so during that time, it was determined that the Dodge and the Ford SUV, really, there wasn't much difference. And so we recommend diversifying our fleet, and the reason for that is, is that we learned vicariously from the city of Austin, who had entire fleet of Ford Explorers, they had a problem with catalytic converter or something that was putting poisonous gas in the cab, and as a result of that, all of their new vehicles had to be parked, and they went back to the very old Crown Vigs. So every one of these are prone to manufacture or recall, so we appreciate the need to diversify our fleet, so we don't get caught without having something to drive. The other aspect of that is, is it will give us time to evaluate performance, and perhaps that will lead to a basis for future purchases. But we will replace the Emergency Management Command Vehicle, which is Chief Altgelt's vehicle, and because I ride in it, I can attest he has gotten all the gooey out of the current one he is driving. And then there will be two patrol vehicles, a Dodge and a Ford, that will replace two patrol vehicles on the street. That equipment will come out of our Vehicle Equipment Replacement Fund. The drainage projects, I will talk about that, and then I'm gonna pause and ask Dan Weckmiller, who is our financial advisor, to come to the podium and tag with this next project. But we have $485,000 earmarked for a short-term tax note. And we are recommending that this tax note be sold. It will not raise taxes, and it would be put toward two things near and dear to our hearts, and that is to continue a commitment to address our drainage projects. So included in this $485,000 would be a citywide drainage master plan. And included in that citywide drainage master plan would be an evaluation of localized drainage projects, and putting together a list that would then be prioritized for a future capital improvement program. It will also include an evaluation system on how one goes about making that assessment, and it would also help staff with a maintenance program long-term for drainage. The master plan would be used as a basis to create the drainage utility that we need ongoing to be able to pay for these projects and maintain. The other piece is, last year, half an associate completed the Gill's Branch 2D model, and recommended about $4.6 million worth of improvements in three distinct projects for Gill's Branch to add capacity. So our recommendation would be that this $485,000 short-term tax note be sold, and half an associate be hired to do the master drainage plan. And the reason for that is, they have studied the drainage of the county, and we haven't do the study for the city, they have done detailed analysis on Gill's Branch, as well as Piney Creek. So they have extensive modeling that will allow them to incorporate that in the report, and really focus where we've not spent much time, and that is on localized draining. So Mayor, if you don't mind, how about we pause and move to our next agenda item, and let Dan come speak on this particular item.
So we'll be kind of putting 8C on hold for a moment, and we'll hear from 8D. Received briefing from Specialized Public Finance, the city's financial advisors on limited tax note issuance and timeline. Hi, Dan.
Hi, thank you, Mayor, Council. Dan Weckmiller with Specialized Public Finance. The timeline for the tax notes, this is a very efficient process when you go to borrow on a short-term basis. We prepare a term sheet that just outlines a seven-year term, the amount. We send it around to financial institutions across the state, across the country. They are interested in the short-term notes. There'll be no rating required, so we save money on not putting a rating on it. We save money because we don't need to put a full-fledged offering document together. It's a very limited term sheet. You will have an ordinance that comes back to you. Our timing is Monday, we'll send the term sheet out to financial institutions. They will respond back to us by September 4th. We will review those bids, and then we will bring those back to you on your September 10th council meeting, and present those bids and recommend your consideration at that time. Again, it's very efficient, very cost-effective, and obviously fits within your budget.
Thank you. Council, any questions? Councilmember Ennis?
Since we haven't approved this drainage project, your sending the Mount for bids doesn't obligate us in any way. If we decide we're not doing this, say, we don't have, we're not obligated to follow through.
Absolutely. When we come back on September 10th, you've incurred no costs, you can reject the bids. Again, if we went through a rating process, you'd have a rating fee that gets established, but that's correct. We will just put these out to those bidders, if something pauses or stops, we can put that process on hold.
I believe, Councilmember Ennis, is that your question, or are you asking a different question?
I was basically making sure that it doesn't obligate us.
I think Councilmember Ennis was asking, if we sell the $485,000 short-term tax note, does it have to be spent on the drainage projects?
Well, I have questions about the drainage projects. So I'm not sold on this. So if we, if you're saying you're going out Monday, that's before we start really working on and deciding on what we're gonna do and what we're not gonna do. And I don't want to be putting the cart before the horse if we can't, and get ourselves in trouble by searching for rates if we haven't decided we're gonna do this or not.
So I think all you're doing is lining up financing in the event they choose to do this.
That's what I'm asking.
Absolutely.
And if they don't want to do it, you won't execute the note, nothing will be sold.
That's correct. We will come back to you on September 10th. We would like to notify bidders before the 10th, if there's some pullback and not wanting to move forward with this. But even coming to you on the 10th, if you decide not to move forward, we can pull it off the table at that time.
Great, that's what I was looking for.
And the closing timeframe would be, you would receive proceeds by September 26th, so the impact on the tax rate is absorbed in that budget, but if you decide to move, pull back, that's fine as well.
Councilmember Ennis, are you satisfied? So my question is that $485,000, if you're issuing a CO, are you, is it tied to a project? So to Councilmember Ennis's point, if he didn't want to spend it on drainage, he could spend it on something else.
Great point. The tax note can be, we will include language to allow for what you've laid out, along with any other general purposes in the city. So if you decide not to move forward or spend less money on the drainage plan, you can use those dollars elsewhere.
Okay. So it's a deposit in the checkbook of the municipality?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Got another one.
Okay.
And this may not have anything to do with you. Does this affect our ability to borrow that $3.5 million, and this may be a question for City Manager, over here for new fire equipment?
They are one in the same, and they are working on both. And the $3.5 million will take into consideration capacity we have in the 2020 budget, the 2021 budget, and the 2022 budget. So you can do drainage and fire, and not raise taxes.
Okay, thanks.
And just a note on that, I think something we've been working with Tracy and City Manager over and over again, and when we're looking at debt issuances, they have us looking multi-year, and we ladder it and stagger it so you can absorb, because the last thing we want to do is structure something today and not anticipate what you may need a year or three years down the road.
That was my next question, was what if something comes up in 2022 that we go, oh my God, how are we gonna cover this? Are we so fully committed, we can't?
I think there are two things that affect that approach, and that is, one, conservatism and the numbers. So what I'm telling you today, and what we bring back to you on, say, this tax note, we build in conservatism, we build them into all the numbers that Tracy runs, because the last thing we want to do is not be able to meet that. So each time, you have some additional capacity built from just basic conservatism, and that's on interest rates, and that's on tax value growth. So fortunately, we've not been in a position to come to you and not be able to meet a need. Now, you're always gonna have to prioritize maybe sometimes projects out, but that, this should not affect any of that as we move forward.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you, Councilmember Ennis. Council, any other questions? All right.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you for staying so late.
Mayor and Council, to finish up with the drainage projects, we have received some preliminary information from half an associates on these costs, but we have a meeting scheduled with them in a very near future to better refine these costs, so that we can provide you a detailed explanation of what will be included in a master drainage plan and what it costs. And if we can reduce what they have projected for the master plan, that will get us more money to work on the Gill's Branch projects. The reason that this is important to us at this time is there is money available through the Texas Water Development Board specifically for drainage. And the success in achieving low-interest grant money or grants is shovel-ready projects. And so if we can get one or two sections of the Gill's Branch infrastructure improvements designed, we stand a much better chance at elevating ourselves to the top of that list. So that's what's really elevating the drainage projects to number one on the list for the use of the short-term tax note. Colin, can you get me back to the presentation, please? The next item deals with possible projects in fiscal year 2020. We have identified several projects that aren't included because there's not funding available at this point, because we don't really know what the actual carryover for fiscal year 2019 is going to be. As I indicated to you, we've got some expenses that we need to come in at a final number, our revenues need to final out. And so when Tracy closes out, what we call the 13th month in November, that closes out fiscal year 2019, she will know how much money is available over and above our 25% fund balance that could be available for allocation. At that time, we would come back, and the four projects that we would ask for you to consider will be our computer replacement program in the amount of $65,000. Given the speed in which technology changes, we have a three-year replacement for desktops and laptop computers. The last two years, this has been funded in the Innovation Fund, but there isn't money available this year until we get through with all of the adjustments to fund that. The second piece is our computer network system improvements that total $76,000. Our current network was put in 10 years ago when this building was built. It is reaching the end of its useful life, and because of our continued need to only enhance our technology, we want to be able to ensure system reliability, so system improvements are needed. We need a new permit tracking software, and honestly, these numbers are guesstimates at best. We have not had time, literally, to slow down in the last six weeks to figure out what new tracking software would look like for our permits. But between now and November, we won't have the necessary bids to justify what that expense would be. But we need an automated ability to track all of the permits that are in our system, so we can make sure our customer service expectations are met, and that we're meeting state law. And then we also would like a customer relations management system. This will allow us to significantly improve our ability to track customer concerns, as well as provide citizen access to track their concerns 24/7/365 with online notification capabilities. And again, this number is a guesstimate, and would be refined before a request would be made. So this is our wish list, if money is available at the end of the year. Let's move to BP&amp;L. BP&amp;L is showing our revenue at $6.6,678,682, which is $99,108 less than 2019-year-end projected. One of the things that I always like to say about revenue projections with electric providers is I wish I could read Mother Nature's mind, but we can go from feast or famine, if it rains every third day and it stays cool, people aren't likely to need as much air conditioning as if we have a 20-day stretch of 105-degree weather. Coal snaps in the winter, if we have a couple of really coal spells, people will use more electricity. So we've taken a very conservative approach in our revenue projections for BP&amp;L. There is $200,000 There is $250,000 included in the budget for streetlight improvements. Back at the April 9, 2019 City Council meeting, there was consensus provided by Council to improve street lighting for walkability. During the discussion, the current street lighting policy was explained, and it's important to note that we currently place streetlights at intersections, dangerous curves, and at all dead-end roadways to guide vehicular traffic. So, this is a policy switch to now start adding streetlights for walkability. And the goal here is to improve lighting for pedestrian safety after dark and balance that with mitigating light pollution and light trespass as much as possible. So, we're not quite sure how we're going to walk that balance, but we're going to try to figure out a plan. So, Council reached consensus to start streetlight improvements, especially along pedestrian corridors in North Bastrop. So, we will be working with our consultant, Matt Lewis, on the Bastrop building block codes and identifying the streets that we think are likely to be pedestrian corridors and where possible, enhancing our streetlights so that we're balancing light pollution and walkability. But I think for $250,000 investment, we will see a substantial lighting increase in North Bastrop, which is something that y'all have been hearing about for years. Community support, in 2020, there will be $240,000 for special projects, $125,000, excuse me, for Christmas lights, $25,000 for the Patriotic Festival, $20,000 for the Bastrop Homecoming and Rodeo, $5,000 for Juneteenth. Bastrop Long-Term Recovery is $10,000. Bastrop Long-Term Recovery works with our emergency management. In the event we were to have some kind of disaster, they are on standby. In September, Chief Autgelt will be presenting a community program that we're going to be doing in September to raise awareness for community preparedness in the event of an emergency, and Bastrop County Long-Term Recovery is going to be a great partner for us in that event. YMCA gets $30,000 for BP&amp;L that pays the utilities for the swimming pool at the State Park.
So, City Manager, did you say that is in the 76-whatever that we talked about before?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that, because that's a number that...
Yes, ma'am. And the food pantry nibbles program was taken out, but at the request of Council, Tracy, I need you to put it back in the emergency food pantry so that the 33658 that they show getting last year is what they get this year. So, that $17,500 that's listed here was in the chart I'm about to show you last year, so the money's the same. But we'll fix the chart and have new pages so that it's not confusing. And then, there is a new website that is being proposed in the Innovation Fund, and it's being paid for by all four funds, the General Fund, the Water-Wastewater Fund, BP&amp;L, and HOT, and this is $7,500 of their contribution. And I'm sorry that the print is small on this, but the community support funding requests that you heard at the end of July at the Council meeting, all of the proposed funding, if they received last year, stays the same. There are only two requests that are different. The first is Bastrop County HI Welfare Board. They did not ask for funding last year. They've asked for $2,000, and there's $2,000 in the budget. And then, Bastrop County First Responders comes and asks for money when they have a specific project, and it is proposed for full funding, $14,787. We count on the Bastrop County First Responders to support our emergency personnel on a daily basis, and they are asking for a trailer that they will be able to use at all of our special events and other uses that really has a powerful public purpose. So, the funding for these requests is $101,545 plus the $17,500 that will be added back to nibbles. Now, there is one new project that is included for community support funding that I am especially excited about, and this is a program that PHI Cares has offered to the city. Many of you probably are aware PHI is an air medic, an air ambulance that services our area. In fact, Scooter Green, who is the president of Bastrop First Responders, is a pilot for PHI. And we are slightly challenged with EMS service in the city of Bastrop. Acadia has the contract for EMS services in Bastrop County, and there are times when it is difficult for Acadia to contractually meet the required response times, and occasionally there are no ambulances in Bastrop County. So, if you are experiencing a significant medical emergency, there is a time period known as the golden hour that matters greatly. And if you are within that first hour and you can get quality medical care, permanent damage can be mitigated. So, this air ambulance becomes an important service in times when ambulances are not available, or perhaps it is 5 o'clock traffic and you can't get across Austin in an hour. So, our first responders call for an air ambulance, and while that sounds great, if you're critically in need, you absolutely want every bit of help you can, and then the bill shows up. And it can create a significant financial challenge for patients with limited or no health insurance, and I'm going to ask Councilmember or Mayor Pro Tim Nelson to chime in, because I believe he's paid one of these bills before. But it can cost in excess of $10,000 very easily. It is a substantial investment. Essentially, what PHI has presented to Council, I mean, to the city, is that they will request a membership fee in the amount of $8 per household. That's for a total of $29,000 that if anybody that is a resident of Bastrop needs an air ambulance, it would be free. That is a substantial contribution to the emergency medical service of this community, which we desperately need to figure out a way to bridge. So, not trying to put you on the spot, Mayor Pro Tim, but I don't know if you want to elaborate on this at all.
Well, I mean, I love it. It creates independence for our community that we have not had before. 10 years ago, I had a heart attack, and it cost me $19,000 to catch a ride to Austin from here.
That's a little over $8.
I like this.
So, that is also included in the community support. Moving to the Hotel Occupancy Tax Fund, just for background, the tax rate for the hotel occupancy tax is centered at a rate of 13.5% in the city of Bastrop in our ETJ. 6% of that goes to the state, 7% goes to the city, 0.5% of that goes to the county if it's in the city's ETJ. So, our hotel occupancy tax is budgeted at $2,830,500. This is 3.5% higher than fiscal year 2019 budget or $94,500, but Tracy likes to always put the asterisk in there, and it's only $200 more than fiscal year 2019 year in projection. So, as she would say, it is what it is. Funding is provided to Visit Bastrop contractually. Our contract sets the parameters for what that amount should be, and the payment for 2020 calculated by the contract is $1,100,200. Is it? We got some extra numbers going on. So, we will get a revised number to you. I think it is the 1.1 million, but it might be 1.2. Tracy, if you look that up just a minute, tell me, that would be great. The Innovation Fund, if y'all remember, is one-time sources of revenue, so it's never intended to be ongoing funding. And so, we have spent a lot of the money on some great projects over the last couple of years. So, we are moving $157,000 in contract mowing from the Innovation Fund to HOT funds. And the truth of the matter is, is if our street right-of-ways are not mowed, the curb appeal of Bastrop would be diminished, and it does, and will drastically impact Visit Bastrop's ability to market us. The latest achievement that we've earned is one of the top 10 coolest small towns or small cities in America for 2019. So, we are suggesting that the contract mowing be moved to the HOT funds. The community asset financing increases are as follows, and tonight you heard presentations from the Visitor Center, Museum, Opera House, and the Art Center. I can't say enough kudos to the work that the Visitor Center, Museum, and Opera House has done over the last several years. Quarter after quarter after quarter, their metrics get better, their productions and exhibits are stellar, and they have really worked to build a very productive relationship with Susan Smith and the team at Visit Bastrop. Part of the process that has been put in place is for us to leverage our community assets. I like to tell people, it doesn't matter when you come to Bastrop, you're going to have a different experience. And the reason for that really is because of our community asset partners, the production schedule that Bastrop Opera House is putting on. Whether you come in the spring or the fall, there's a different production to see. The museum is doing a great job of providing exhibits that are tied back to, again, things that Visit Bastrop has to offer whenever you come to the community. So, as a result of that, I have included the full funding request for both the Visitor Center and Museum and the Bastrop Opera House. This is the first year that the Art Center has requested funding. They requested $142,837. I included $85,000, and I'm sure you're going to ask, well, why $85,000? Well, when you look at the history of the Bastrop Opera House, until very recently, they were getting much more than $90,000. I did not make that decision on what they submitted. It is a starting point. It is better in line with what our other partners are doing that have a history. The mayor was very eloquent this evening in explaining the expectations related to that $85,000. So, this is for them to put together programs that meet the objectives of our HOT funds, that meet the objectives of working with our Visit Bastrop, and they will be added to the quarterly updates, just like the Opera House and the Visitor Center, and the proof will be in the pudding. If they perform, they get the money. If they don't, they won't, but I'm not in the business of managing the Art Center, so I wasn't about to determine what of their programs is funded. So, my recommendation is $85,000. As I mentioned in the Innovation Fund, this is really one-time uses of money. There is a reconciliation in your budget for the Innovation Fund. Many projects have been completed or will be carried over from completion in 2020. There are, I believe, two new programs remaining, one's continued, one is new. We are continuing our partnership with CARTS and funding $20,000 from our inter-local agreement, and then the new website, which we estimate will be $30,000, again, we are, these are estimates, will be funded by the General Fund, Water-Wastewater, BP&amp;L, and the Hotel Occupancy Tax. Street Maintenance Fund, one of the things that we have been challenged with is bringing you bids that meet engineers' opinion of probable cost. We have heard multiple times about the significant amount of large-scale regional construction projects occurring in Austin, and we are also aware that costs of construction overall are 25% higher now than they were this time last year. Walker Partners, who is our engineer of record for street maintenance, will be here at the August 27th meeting to present a possible solution for the challenges that we've experienced, and I'll just kind of preempt their presentation for you. We are combining fiscal year 2019 and 2020 street maintenance plan. We had hoped to be able to rehabilitate Old Austin Highway, and the cost is just too expensive because of the abundance of work available. So, it was the recommendation of Council that we do something to mitigate the failure of that street and protect it until market conditions change and we can actually fix it. So, you will see a street maintenance program that does that. There is about $154,000 of funding remaining in a 2013 bond issue that was for Alley D, and it is allowed for streets. And so, we are proposing that that money be included in the Street Maintenance Fund to do two things. The first one is to buy a HOT box for $90,000. Many of you, including myself, ride around town, and we see street cuts that are open for weeks, and you wonder, why aren't we fixing them? Well, small cities with small-scale repair projects are difficult to pull up to a hot-mix asphalt plant in Buta and get them to turn the plant on, because it ain't worth heating up for what we need. So, what has to happen is staff has to put together this list until they can justify a trip to Buta to get a load and come back, and in the meantime, our commitment to good street good doesn't work, because the longer that cuts open, the more potential to eroding the base there is. So, this HOT box would allow us to heat up asphalt when we need it. So, when construction or the utility cuts are being scheduled, because Curtis Hancock schedules our overseas streets and water, he can make sure that when the utility department does a street cut, a couple of days later, the street department's back there patching it. So, it will seriously help us protect our streets. There is $64,000 allocated for MLK street improvements. Now, it's important for us to recognize that when the PCI index was conducted in 2018, MLK Street is a failed street. It technically should not be included in the street maintenance program, because street maintenance program is intended to keep the good streets good. But, the same reason that we need to rehabilitate Old Austin Highway is the same reason we need to make some improvements to MLK. They are both on streets with schools, and they both have connection points to State Highway 71. So, there are some really significant failures on MLK, specifically at the intersection of Emile and MLK. Some drainage challenges in that area, and that's close to State Highway 71. We have gotten numerous complaints from citizens about the condition of that street. So, we are proposing that $64,000 be allocated to fix MLK. It is a Band-Aid. Hopefully, it will add a couple of years' life until we can put together a capital improvement program to permanently resolve some of our failing streets. So, again, on the 27th of August, Walker Partners will be here to explain how we're going to consolidate the two years' worth of work, and they are going to propose that a bid be put out in October that essentially gives contractors until September of next year to complete the work. And the thought is, is that, yes, they do have all of this work that they are committed to, but between projects or whatever, there's always downtime, and that downtime is expensive overhead that contractors struggle to pay. So, if we leave it up to them as to when they do this work, and they can do it when it makes sense for them, maybe they'll sharpen their pencil and do it at a reduced fee, because we're helping to cover overhead they otherwise would not get. After the last two bids have not worked, Walker Partners called, I think, a dozen contractors to ask the question, why didn't you bid? And all of them said, if you would put together something like this, we'd be very interested in doing so. So, they will be here on the 27th in hopes that this year we can actually get somebody to perform the street maintenance that we have money budgeted for. But we've tried twice, neither of the bids worked, and they were, in some instances, 100% higher than our engineers' opinion of probable cost, and we want to be as good stewards of our tax dollars as possible. of stewards of our tax dollars as possible. The next item is our Water/Wastewater Fund. There is a fund summary of revenues and expenditures for 2020. The wastewater revenue is budgeted at $7,437.806, which is about $534,000 more than year in projected. The significant rate increase, well, let me say it this way. We know a significant rate increase will be required to cover the debt payments for the wastewater treatment plant in 2021. And it was determined back in 2018 that council would spread the expected rate increases over a three-year period of time. So, some of our construction schedules have spread out, and that has helped with that. But the minimum charge for wastewater will be $41.97 per month, which is an increase of $5 effective January 1st. Last year, we raised it $10. This year, we're raising it $5. This increase is expected to generate an additional $163,215 in revenue. The largest expenditure in this fund is the debt service transfer, which is $2,629,919 in 2020, which will be expenses associated with our capital projects. The CIP section in our book has detailed information on each one of the water and wastewater projects. It's an individual page, describes the project, the money, and the source of funds for additional detail. Our capital improvement projects, there were a number of projects included in our fiscal year 2019 CIP that have been designed and are now close to being either designed or will start construction in 2020. These projects include Main Street Rehabilitation, Wastewater Treatment Plant Number Three, Centralized Water Treatment Plant, our Street Maintenance Program, sidewalks, trails, Jasper Newton Drainage, Public Works Detention Pond, Pond Street Channel Improvements, and our skate park. Representatives from KSA Engineering will attend the August 27th council meeting, will provide a status update on our wastewater treatment plant and the transmission and distribution lies. The plans are at about 30%, and should be at 90 in September. And then I've already mentioned Walker Partners will be here on the 27th to talk about the Street Maintenance Plan. So, we can affectionately, at this moment, call fiscal year 2020 the Year of Building. One of the things that I appreciate most is the strategic vision that goes into this budget document. I have said many times, and I teach classes for the Certified Public Managers Training, and I constantly reiterate, that the budget document is the single most important strategic communication tool a city produces. And I appreciate the fact that this budget is built around the city's vision, the city council's nine focus areas, and our comprehensive plan that was adopted in 2016. So when you go to the strategic vision portion of the council, or I'm sorry, of the budget book, we have a detailed explanation of the comprehensive plan accomplishments that have been made to this point, and quite a bit has been accomplished in bringing the comprehensive plan to life. We have also tied our work plans the last three years to those nine focus areas. So at this time, I want to just kind of put the achievements of 2019 into perspective, because these items were in last year's budget, and we hoped that we would be able to say on this day that we had got that accomplished. And then I'll talk about some of the work plan items that are included for 2020. We are pleased to note that we got public recognition for not only the budget I've talked about, but we won Great Places, the APA Texas Award for Downtown Bassdrop. We were fortunate to have Chet Garner with the Day Tripper come and do a promotional video for the City of Bassdrop that's already been seen a gazillion times and really promoting the work that has been done here for years on downtown Bassdrop. And we also won the 2018 Texas Downtown Association Spirit of Downtown President's Award. Under building Bassdrop, we have spent significant time working on Bassdrop building blocks to ensure our fiscal sustainability. We hosted the pop-up of the codes and anticipate you will adopt those in October of 2019. The International Code Council codes are currently under review with the Construction Standards Board, and your anticipated adoption will be in November. We revised Chapter 5 of the Thoroughfare Plan to include a gridded street network, and you should adopt that as well in October. You have already adopted the 1445 ordinance with Bassdrop County, adopted a grandfathering ordinance. Under communication, we have conducted extensive public input for building Bassdrop to include community walking tours, bike tours. We did a mobility tour to make sure all of our citizens that rely on some type of motorized wheelchair or scooter could maneuver downtown. We learned an awful lot. We've had a developer forum, a two-day design, and a two-day code rodeo. We had public meetings to discuss the transportation plan and our drainage ordinance. We did a final code update in May. We did a come-and-go public meeting in June. You implemented a moratorium, and we've moved out of the moratorium into an expanded review process. We have significantly increased our presence on social media with standardized branding that allows people to recognize that it's the City of Bassdrop putting out the information so that they know it's a reliable source. Capital projects, Agnes Drive from State Highway 304 to Seton Hospital will be completed. The drainage and water portion of the North Main Community Rehabilitation has been completed. The street and wastewater portion will be completed, I believe, before October. And as I mentioned, by September, we'll be at 90% design of the Water/Wastewater Treatment Plant. Drainage, the Drainage Ordinance and Technical Manual was updated and completed the 2D Drainage Analysis of Gill's Branch. From a long-term water capacity standpoint, we bought 3,000 acres of water rights in Simsboro Aquifer. We now have 7,614 acres of water consolidated in the Simsboro Aquifer. We sold revenue bonds for wastewater and water utilities. It was our first-time sale, and we received a double A minus rating from Standard and Poor. I'm extraordinarily proud of that. That is exceptional for any community, but one of our size to get a double A rating speaks to the amount of strategic planning and long-term thinking that happens in Bassdrop. Then we also executed a long-term agreement for Hustle Water with Aqua, so we have redundancy in our system, and that can bridge any demands that we need until we can get the water plant built. Under organizational excellence, we have removed more than 250 chickens and roosters out of downtown. Yes, yes. We've had a 54% increase in convention center revenue when comparing 2019 to 2018. We conducted a food truck pilot program and adopted an ordinance, and hopefully in October, that will become a permanent part of our regulations. I've mentioned the 3% reduction in medical insurance rates and have participated with our Compass Medical Concierge Service for savings in excess of $130,000 in medical costs with a 39% employee engagement. That's really impressive. So let's talk about the strategic vision and elements for the 2020 work plan by focus area. One of the things that I do want to note before we get into that is that I have three main operational objectives to put the 2020 budget work plan into perspective. And it will be the year to build, educate, and focus. And what do I mean by that? We will be building the capital improvement program. Many of the projects that were included and we've just covered will start construction in 2020, so we will be overseeing lots of significant improvements in the community. We need to educate our citizens on the challenges and impact to our future fiscal sustainability resulting from the elimination of annexation. As I mentioned very early in the presentation, we need to determine a long-term strategy quickly, because we need to make sure that any green field development that occurs, we are optimizing our ability to be fiscally sustainable as well as when infield development occurs. And then we're going to focus on process improvements through the implementation of performance measures in the fiscal year 2020 book, and it's in draft format, and it'll be finalized by the time we publish that final budget. But every department has established performance measures. Every one of those performance measures will have a process tied to it to ensure that the service commitments can be met, tracked, and the end result is it will improve our customer service. So, I'm very excited to finally get to this. As I have said, I've spent, will be just about three years, working on getting the organization to a place that I had hoped it would be when I got here, so I'm excited that we are getting to do what I had anticipated doing when I first walked in. So, it's an exciting time for all of us. I'm extremely impressed and pleased at the level of commitment the cabinet has placed on this and the excitement that they see as well, because it will help us work smarter, not harder, and given our workload, we all appreciate the power of that. So let's walk through the work plan in the context of the nine focus areas of council. The first focus area is maintaining authentic Bassdrop. So, included in that is the Main Street Rehabilitation Program. We all know that we need to address funding for the Old Iron Bridge Rehabilitation Project. It's way more than we anticipated, and so we need to spend time figuring out how we're going to fund that. We plan to obtain our certified local government designation staff. As soon as we get the codes adopted, are going to move into that, so hopefully in early 2021, that will be completed. We'll build Phase 1 of the skate park in Fisherman's Park. We're going to implement the Cultural Arts Master Plan. We will complete the North Main Community Rehabilitation Program, the fixed water/wastewater, land replacement, street rehabilitation, and drainage improvements on some of our more older streets in North Bassdrop. It will implement the sidewalk improvement plan in North Bassdrop, and then the streetlight improvement plan in North Bassdrop that is included in the BP&amp;L budget. Communication, we're going to develop and implement an education plan on Bassdrop's long-term fiscal sustainability. We're partnering with TechDOT to communicate impacts of the 71 construction on traffic, because the installation of bridges for the service roads and the main lane construction is going to have a profound impact on several aspects of our community. Not only the main lane traffic passing through, but river traffic. We have several river companies that count on the river for their usage. When they install the bridge, it's going to require coffer dams to be installed. That's going to change the elevation profile in a flood, so that will be studied, and we'll have to have an interim emergency management protocol, so when the river comes up, we can anticipate what that looks like. And then it will also impact special events. So, we have a great relationship with TechDOT. We have met their project manager and are going to be effective partners in making sure all of that is communicated appropriately. We're going to purchase and implement a new website, as well as the Citizen Relationship Management System if funding is available in November. From a community safety standpoint, we've talked about designing and building the wastewater treatment plant number three. Hopefully, the water tower at State Highway 20 and 71 will be completed. If the drainage master plan is funded, it would be completed, as well as the designs of the Gill's Branch Improvement Projects. The Public Works Detention Ponds and the Pine Street Drainage Improvements have been designed, and they're at the Texas Department of Emergency Management waiting on authorization for construction. We have received that approval for Jasper Newton Drainage, and we're meeting in the next week or so to kick that project off. Economic vitality, we will implement the fiscal impact analysis model to determine development-related fiscal sustainability. And I've already mentioned that when the pilot project for the food truck ordinance happens, that we will transition that to a finalized product. Under fiscal responsibility, we'll implement Years 1 and 2 of the Street Maintenance Program. One of the things to help augment the nighttime personnel for fire, I'm delighted that our nighttime shift of the police department is excited about becoming dual-certified, and so they would be not only police, but firefighters. So at night, when we need response, we'll have police on the street that can be there to bridge until mutual aid can arrive. So at every point, we can improve that emergency response for fire. We are certainly doing that and appreciate the support of the police department. We're going to be partnering with BIS to develop a traffic management plan for Emil Elementary. They create significant traffic congestion on MLK Drive and Pine Street, and there are some changes to State Highway 71 that is going to cause them to have to readjust their traffic plan. So, we have already had an initial meeting with BISD and TechDOT, and we'll be working with them this year and their new chief to resolve this longstanding issue. We also will purchase and implement the permanent management software to ensure we manage our review process if funding is available in November. Managed growth will be to implement the new Building Bassdrop block codes that you will adopt in November, hold a joint meeting with council and planning and zoning, which I anticipate will probably be in June. P&amp;Z will make the recommendations in May. In June, y'all would receive that information, so that that gives us time to put anything in the budget if something needs to be studied or action needs to be taken. It's at the right part of our cycle to be able to do something about it. And that way, you can adopt annual changes to ensure the B3 codes remain fiscally sustainable in perpetuity. Multimodal, we will continue to partner with CARTS. We have a planning meeting scheduled for October, so very exciting things happening relative to other multimodal opportunities beyond just your typical fixed bus route. We are working with CARTS to implement a secondary bus route. It is extremely exciting for a community of our size to have access to mass transportation, and really excited about the partnership that we have with CARTS and look forward to what that holds for us in 2020. Under organizational excellence, we will be developing process improvements for all of the performance measures that I indicated. We're going to continue to complete the task necessary to obtain the Texas Police Chief's Recognition Program. Part of the things that we're going to be working on for long-term fiscal sustainability, we have not addressed any of our building maintenance needs. You know, we've talked to y'all to this point about streets, we've talked about water and wastewater, but we have building assets that we have to maintain. This building's now going to be 10 years old. Our HVAC equipment is wearing out. We desperately need a new public works facility. So, we have to put together a 20-year plan, and the reason for 20 years is your roofs are about 20 years. Your HVA systems extend beyond 10 years, so we need to get a 20-year plan so we can begin to build into the operating and maintenance aspects of our budget, building maintenance. We also have to do the same thing for park maintenance. We have to put together a plan, because parks are critically important in the quality of life elements that our citizens come to expect. We have a large amount of public realm that will be acquired through our codes, because that's what makes walkability work. So we have to figure out how to make sure that we have a plan for long-term fiscal sustainability. And then, as I mentioned, we need to complete improvements for our citywide network, as well if funding is available in November. And then as far as our unique environment, one of the important things for our cemetery board is to create a memorial tree program. Trees we appreciate are a part of what makes the Lost Pines area special and necessary for shade in this time of the year. So, that concludes the highlights and strategic elements that go into fiscal year 2020. I hope this time next year, I'm giving the same report in 2020 that I was able to give relative to the work that's been done in fiscal year 2019. But I want to offer some thanks at this time, because budgets don't bill themselves. U.S. Councils spend an extraordinary amount of time throughout the year, attending special workshops, listening to specific issues, and offering direction as we go through the year, much like you did on streetlights. So, people say, well, you're just now getting the budget. You've only had it, you know, a few weeks. The truth of the matter is y'all work on budget 12 months out of the year, and as we have issues, y'all make recommendations or provide consensus, and that gets incorporated into the books. It also requires you to make bold commitments to ensure long-term sustainability. You did that last year with the capital improvement projects, and know that that is your commitment moving forward. I also want to thank our citizens for inputs. There are several projects in this budget that are directly tied back to their input. Street lighting is one. Adding the street repairs for MLK is one. Working with Emil Elementary to address the traffic issues is another. The sidewalk improvements that will start in North Bassdrop, we heard about a year or two ago, and we'll be able to make that a catalyst project for the codes for pedestrian safety. So, there is input at every level, from our council to our citizens, and then to our staff. I want to extend a huge thank you to Tracy Waldron, Mary Deering, Haley Delarosa, and Trina Miller in our finance department. These ladies have worked diligently since January to bring the book that you have before you to fruition and working with our cabinet and their staffs. And as always, I And as always, I remain extraordinarily proud of the cabinet. They really have stepped up their game. I'm emotional because I'm so proud of them. The difference between this year and last year, it just cannot even be put into words. The level of ownership that they have is tremendous. We have been presented, as I have said, with some unplanned expenditures. We sat around the room and made some very strategic decisions about how to put a plan in place for something that may or may not happen. We didn't know whether or not we would have revenue. We didn't know whether the expenses. It was quicksand, but we put together a plan. We monitored it monthly. Nobody wined or complained. They just know that's what the mission is required. They worked extremely hard on every one of their sections. You can see tonight, there's no fluff in this budget. We've only asked for the things that we desperately need. They're either worn out. We can't push fire another year. So, we have brought you the things that we absolutely have to focus on until we can figure out a permanent funding plan for the fiscal sustainability challenges that we have moving forward. So, in spite of the incredible workload, we have put together, I think, a really smart development process that we'll talk about tomorrow night in a very short period of time. And at the end of the day, it's just outstanding on their part. So, mayor and council, that concludes my introduction. And next week, we will have several meetings to get off in the detail of whatever part of this you have an interest in. Chief Rosales and Tracy will be available to make presentations on fire, and we'll have additional information on drainage.
Thank you very much, City Manager. And we're going to extend our thanks to staff. And I know Tracy was pulling rank around City Hall yesterday. I know, I get to, I need my answers trying to get the last-minute things done, and really appreciate all of the folks in the back of the room and all of their staffs that worked so hard to get it all done. Really appreciate it. Council, you've got your hard copy. It will be uploaded tomorrow morning for the public to look at. I noticed several of us have brought last year's, and I know we'll be comparing last year's to this year. It sure makes it a lot easier to be, to have a consistent format and to know what the funds are like. Council, we have Item 8E. It is also the exact same verbiage that is listed for tomorrow night. It is going to be the overview. She's talked about it quite a bit tonight. With the legislation that is effective on September 1st, we've got to make some changes. And so, we'll be doing a bit of a Band-Aid to get us from September 1st to when we adopt our new codes. So, we're going to step through that, and it's long and complicated, and I'm glad we're not starting it at 10 o'clock tonight. That's why we are meeting at 5:30 tomorrow. So, I do want to acknowledge 8E so that the public knows that the briefing on the development review process is the topic of the agenda for tomorrow night, and you will see 8E, the exact same verbiage for tomorrow. There are no staff and board reports. We've already taken care of citizen comments. We need to take care of the consent agenda, which only has one item, which is consider action to approve city council minutes from July 23, 2019. It's a regular meeting and the August 6, 2019 special meeting. If I could have a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Rogers, a second from Councilmember Peterson. Is there any further discussion?
For the board.
Yes.
Do we need to read the items on the consent agenda?
I just did.
Okay. Sorry, missed it.
It's approving the minutes for the two meetings.
I just thought you, normally, you read the whole caption.
I did.
I tell you, I'm not any good after five hours of listening to stuff.
There was only one item, and I read it fast, and we're approving the meeting minutes for the two meetings.
Call the question.
So, Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Rogers.
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis.
Yes.
Thank you, Council.
Mayor Protem Nelson.
Oh, sorry. Going to let them all vote. You just want to do everything.
Yes.
There we go. All right. We unanimously approved the minutes for July 23rd and August 6th. And now, Councilmember Peterson.
Mayor, before we adjourn, I want to tell the City Manager, you can breathe now.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Yes, absolutely. Excellent job. Round of applause for staff and City Manager. It is 10:05. We are adjourned, and we will be meeting tomorrow at 5:30. Please note the earlier time. See you tomorrow at 5:30. We are adjourned.